I'm not long for you.
Oh, yeah.
This one is like really accelerates. Like accelerating in front of a three. And then like.
Evening.
There we are. And we are.
Good evening. It is Thursday. So, uh, tonight, so basically, committee meetings, so first committee meeting is an executive committee meeting and the event here. Paris Slaughter from City Council. For this half hour, it's pretty important because he's going to prioritize some initiatives that are coming up in the general election. And please, specifically, have the things on hand. So we'll be discussing, uh, presentation and questions we'll have. Do that for about an hour and then immediately after that. Over, and then to budget committee meeting where we will be going over the capital home. Congratulations for fiscal year 2027. And so welcome to Seattle, as it is still being that. Further ado, I turn over to Mr. Slaughter.
Thank you so much. Thank you so much for the invitation. Uh, let me.
Oh, that's not the.
Oh, yeah. A few other things on there. Um, so yeah, well, that's loading. So, folks. So. City Council, not just my division, but I'm sort of seeing occasion. It's not matter of necessity, just to provide some. And I'll go into it in a second, but.
Okay, um, oh, sorry. Okay, we have an issue. We need a PDF. The PowerPoint will not open. In this computer. Yeah. Let me, I think I guess I can.
Make it a PDF and send it back to you.
Actually, I think, yes, okay. Yeah.
Right, okay.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Open? Oh, you can do that? Cool.
While we're doing that, I'm so sorry. Could you just identify yourself again? Thank you.
Don't underestimate this horrible computer.
We're the planning and landings division at City Council. What we do is we stand in the landings committee and zoning and landmarks. And generally, we work on.
But I can't open it because it's stupid.
Yeah.
Computer stuff. I mean, our computer, the city gives us a single size. For your office. See? I'll take it. Just I'll take it to my.
Like this cardigan.
And I believe there's only one Brooklyn representative on that committee, but so far, city, that's.
That's right.
I think that's right, yeah.
But they'll change if we have a new council.
Yeah, but I just feel like I just wanted to mention that out loud because with all of the city, yes, and all of the land use stuff that did come through the council. There was only one Brooklyn representative on that committee.
There, there is a subcommittee on zoning and franchise. Yes. I think. There, uh, and. Oh, isn't the, listen, on his own, I got. I would love to have your counsel.
Which one? You got time.
Lewis is great student. Joseph is more steep than.
She's the one who made it, too.
So we're working on, oh, okay, yeah. Um, yeah, sorry about.
Sorry, we'll figure it out. We can talk without those slides.
Yeah. Um, so just to set some background on. The Charter Provision Commission came out with. Or it's. They didn't actually come out with actual ballot proposals. Process, maybe we mentioned the vote was early July. So this process went very quickly. Um, actually took us a couple of months. Some already kind of really understand the language. So, one rea- one main reason why we're coming out to wars. Is that the way that some of the proposals in the bill. Although I think that is the intent of the proposals, it's actually not what's in the actual. So today I want to add there. The other part is the. Uh, it's verified was actually in the text. It's, I think, there's a lot of potential concerns. So. The. There's three, uh, questions to focus on. Question two is two parts. Both are pretty fast, reading fast tracks for a Portland development. Question three. A fast track for, oh, great. One, so. Look, I tell you, you have a good, okay, now you can go to the next slide. Some of it's helped me. I had to give this presentation last night, fully only. Again, you guys know this stuff. So, uh, yeah, just before I jump into the proposals, just for a second. The commission has been criticizing the yield process as being long, overly expensive. You know, we agree with a lot of that, although that said, pre-legal process is long, yield itself is only seven months. That's kind of the time of the public how to get. Just the proposals. I don't find that that, it should certainly expensive. But it's a process that, you know, we think works. Those great examples. You know, your neighbors to the north, Iguanas. Uh, that neighborhood is booming now with residential that should be there. But the council member at the time was able to secure a lot of investments. Like $200 million for that. More recent example with Western Rednares. The council member there was able to get them to drop the asylum proposal. And, uh, double the amount of affordable housing on the site. Three hundred. Uh, and then, uh, some of that same area, the midtown rezoning. I think again, a great place for housing, but there was a lot of concern about garment industry. And basically the value of residential, there we go. Totally displaces. Street. So we negotiate with the administration that didn't want to do that. To really have some more protections for the garment industry. We actually carved out certain blocks where it's not, where residential is not allowed. Where it's not supposed to be allowed, but it's not allowed. It's still two blocks. Excellent. So jumping to the proposals, so question two, there's two parts. The first part two A is about providing a fast track for affordable housing. And again, this is being billed as publicly subsidized affordable housing. In the legal text, in the law, there is no mention of public subsidy or subsidy at all. It's not a requirement. Um, furthermore, it's kind of being billed as like HPD term sheet housing. Which is usually a hundred percent affordable, not always. It's not a requirement for a hundred percent affordable. The only requirement is that it's partly upward. And that could be concerning because I don't think this is the intent of the law. But. Theory and NIH only project. And so what is this new round? No more U-Lab. Private residence private sites that meet this criteria, you know, go to BSA. And some of the concerns is that ESA is not going to negotiate necessarily. Whereas the council members do for deeper affordability, for infrastructure, for community investments. Um, the other thing we didn't say. Affordable buildings is better mix, basically more family sized units. Uh, I just don't believe in BSA. So, you know, that's a concern. You know, um. Yeah, let me pause here for a second. Any questions?
One that is similar to project. For the housing, we're.
No. So it's, it's complicated. So then, the, what the law says is that it has to be owned in part by an entity that was formed exclusively to provide.
Hopefully, both the partnership and the exact. One living house, one living house, theory. I'm just in theory. I'm thinking worst case scenario there.
Yeah.
And suddenly it qualifies for faster. Every developer on the city is, don't let loose balls, they're going to figure out how to do that.
I think practically it'll be more like just like one unit, but that's the concern is an NIH only project could be the.
I got a couple, um, just kind of speaking a little bit. We have very little NIH mapped to this district right now because we haven't had many resignings after the law. Um, I've also noticed that we have an, uh, according to the equitable data, uh, sorry, equitable development data explorer from GCP. We've since 2014 created 1,170 across any incumbent homes. So we're really behind on affordable housing production in this district. Um, particularly, you know, I think this is something we'll talk about more in our district needs later. Um, but one question I did have is you did, you know, another thing that's not necessarily captured in this data here is, is one, something you brought up about. Larger apartments, family sized homes and so forth. That's something that I know we hear a lot at this board. Um, I'm just kind of curious if there is any statistics from council on U-Labs that have gone all the way through. And what number of them have changed to decrease height, to decrease, um, the number or, you know, decrease sizes out, decrease the number of total units. Like I'm thinking a little bit about a project in Julie Menon's district, um, council member of the Upper East Side, on 94th Street where, um, it was, uh, nine, yes, 94th Street, 94th Street that. Um, there was a lot of touting from council that it was a much better, um, deal because it got more affordability. And lower height, but maintain the same number of new homes. But what's hidden in a lot of that coverage is that. Most of them knew mostly more homes in the building became studios in one bedroom, which is something that I know we've seen a lot of struggle for. And, you know, having watched U-Labs across council, um, for the past few years, I've noticed that's only a trend that's recently been kind of bucked. The, the goal is to keep homes and keep home group money sizes. So I'm just kind of curious if there's data on that or if it's kind of just more. Maybe this can be used that way because my experience is that council has primarily used this in the other direction.
Yeah, um, well, there, there is some data from the Bears Commission. Of council modifications. But what I'm saying, I don't have those numbers. Maybe, but that. Yeah, I mean, it's something, you know, there's a lot of opposition to that project. So, you know, we try to reach common. So, yeah, there, we ramped up some down units. Council member, but the other priority first to get by. So we made some. Oftentimes, actually, when the places and sizes were going to be opposite. Almost every affordable project. We're able to negotiate in order to that. I think we should put together those numbers. That's a great suggestion. That is the trend. Uh, but yeah, I mean, a lot of private U-Labs, if they weren't, they're not fully affordable. I feel that's sometimes.
I have a question for you too. So, um.
That's really excellent.
Concerns, that's, that's all I was providing. Yes, and plank of this, uh. I think there's most criteria, right, that, uh, is basically for you, it's the, you know, such a name for. See if there are a whole picture to conditions. So, this is that, the thinking, this thought exercise for affordability. Even BSA wouldn't be holding the applicant steadfast to meet those affordability requirements or that. Then BSA would really be in a position. So actually, we'd like to check or work with some sort of powerful government. Check that.
Um, no, it's a weird question. Um, you know, I think that there's two things working against that have. One is it's all appointed by the mayor. Mayor. Want some question for more. There is. My. Um, the second thing is, I think the experience that most people have with BSA applications is that. You know, I have a lot of respect for the BSA commissioners and consultants. I think a lot of them don't respond as it's not. This law actually provides good findings for this new authority. So I think it's no question. I do want to keep going, so. It's not a loss. But we can come back to that. Excellent. Um, so the second, um, the second, so again, question two on the ballot. Uh, second part, two fast drives, this is the second fast drive. Uh, so for community districts that haven't been doing that part. Uh, the U-Lab process will be shortened. It's just remove city council. With the city planning commission, we say. Let me go to the next slide. So because Community Board 14 has done so much production, uh, the last 15 years, 20 years ago. Um, it's not on this list, and this list is longer. So there's the 12 at Star Wars. Uh, orange, I guess, yellow. Um, but because they're all close together and they haven't determined the final list. Depending on how the numbers go, any of these might wind up in the bottom. Community Board 14 is not. But your neighbors, maybe where 12 are. So, I'm, you know, I'm bringing up, and then we were eighteen. Well, it's fifteen and eighteen. Simple thing. Um, so, you know, your neighbors are included. You know, look, some of these community districts need to be done. And more housing in general, the market. Um, our primary concern. It actually, we go back to the last slide. Our primary concern with this comment. Was, you know, we did a whole fair housing legislation. That had the same, kind of same framework, basically said, you know, it should be tar- housing targets for every community district. Like the districts that are not doing that part. So this, in a way, complements that, but it doesn't, it doesn't use the framework that was established that we negotiated with the administration. And the problem with using just, um, this simple equation. Is that certain things are not considered like infrastructure, access to transit. But it. And then also thinking about natural affordability and kind of some demographics. So some, some of these areas. You know, they haven't been over this lot of housing. But they do provide kind of natural affordability for moderate. You know, and that's something that the parents have looked at. So our concern with this is that. And if you go back and go to the next slide. Some of these districts make sense, and some of these districts may not make sense. And it makes a big difference because. These are the ones where we're focusing now. So that, that's our biggest concern. Let's go to the next slide. So, uh, the ballot question three provides now E-Lab. Expedited landing. So the idea of this is it's. Minor. Minor increases of density shouldn't have to go through the full process. They should have an expedite. So that expedite process is with this. Um, community board and or president there have overlapping review periods. And. And, um, the city council is cut out. City planning commission has the five to say. So from a planning perspective, you know, this makes a lot of sense to me. Except, that next line. So, not all areas that are zoned medium and high density are actually built. So this idea of, oh, it's only a 30% increase or less that this provides. Well, lots of parts of Flatbush, the map R six. It's Brownsville. Most of them. Downs. And then also neighborhoods, the Bronx and some neighborhoods, Queens. Their homeownership, it's the lowest, you know, neighborhood, but they're mapped R six because that 1916 zoning. Uh, and some of that, I think, is issues about that. What neighborhoods are down, so what's not? Now, if you go from R six to R seven two, I mean, you guys know this bill.
Yep.
That's an R seven two building. So neighborhoods like this, it starts to see buildings like this. Um, and. You know, fortunately, these neighborhoods have not seen a lot of teardowns under the R six. But the question is, would you get that extra density, really now see teardowns and displacement? Of course, homeowners are selling and playing off of that, but it's kind of neighboring character.
Got no clue. I think, you might know, um. This community board was considered for a long time one of the least developable, um, community districts in the city because we were already at, at FAR in most of the neighborhoods. I don't really know the impact of city of yes on that, but this scenario seems less potentially.
It's less relevant. But it would affect.
You know, it's not very developable.
Yes, although the part two of this. Next slide. This proposal also allows every low density district, part one through R five. To have applications for four story apartment. Go through this fast track without cities. And what this means, I think it's effectively, it's something that's at the end. Particularly high values, family districts where. And, you know, you, you know, it's not going to work in South Shorestead. Buildings, but areas that have really nice rents. This becomes a concern where. There might be teardowns of the same family homes. So a much of four story. Um, no, it's just, it's just says four story.
There's no, it's a, you can go through. Four and they are, it used to be a seven, five and they are.
It just can't, it can't exceed four stories. It's one, 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 like what's there, whatever they decide.
It's true. I mean, it's a lot like the transit or it did, well paid dwelling residents that we fought so hard to control that.
It's worse.
We want to note that there was some dissent on that because, um, a lot of the homes that are single family are much more, a lot of the resulting apartments. So, um, there is, I think, we did hear from the public in on both sides of that argument, even if our final explanation was against it with the board.
So, uh, question four, and the last one. This is the affordable housing. For every residential application that triggers MIH. The city council, it'll still go through normal U-Lab, except they're adding a stop on the train. It doesn't stop at city council now, it will now stop at this appeals board. City council speaker, the mayor. And this board will have the opportunity to, uh, change anything or write it. That'll be what they know. Appeals can't be authorized. If they modify an application. They could, they could change those. Next slide.
Question, there's two people on that.
And possibly dumb question, but what is the difference in a public hearing and a public meeting?
Oh, fair, yes, and I'm glad you asked that. Um, and that's one of the concerns, you know, city council, we have a public here. Public meeting, the public is not allowed. Uh, they can come, they can come. They can hear a nice symbol. But there's no testimony. That's one of the concerns, we're going to undo what city council. Shouldn't you have a hearing about it? Um, so I bring up city of yes because this community in particular, because Joseph was such a key vote to actually getting it passed. Secured a lot of neighborhood specific, uh, changes and they benefited other neighborhoods too. It's mainly for you guys. Um, and giving this example because these are the type of modifications that this appeals board. So that's some of the concern is. Um, you know, there's, there's a negotiation that's done to try and make as many people happy in as possible. And now this appeals board, which is two out of three of those votes. But, you know, I'm defining on why that negotiation. Next slide. Another example is, uh, neighborhood resumes. You know, this neighborhood has already, it's been rezoned. I don't know that there's interest in any other.
Oh, stay tuned.
Yeah. Um, but, you know, that's it. Yeah, no, the, the, the issue with this is neighborhood resignings are typically led by a member. Now, with the appeals board, city, the administration wanted to do a reset. They wouldn't need the local council necessarily. Some of the kind of local, very specific commitments that council members are able to get from administration. They are not.
The appeals boards automatically trigger, right, like after the, after the top two votes. It can automatically go to the appeals board or like, does there need to be an appeal file? Like.
Yeah, great question. You know, there has to be an appeal file. By who? Either the applicant or the, or the actually the administration.
And assuming that applicant probably would always try to appeal if, yeah, if there's something that they didn't know how to take that.
Uh, yeah, not necessarily, but yeah, yeah. And, and just to clarify, it's not just the, like, any of the three. Pretty sure it's able to agree that they're all.
My understanding was that this proposal, um, would only allow the appeals to override those zoning information. So things on here like. Um, whatever funding is being used for the affordable housing, you know, public sites, you know, all of these, um, things wouldn't actually be able to have been overridden. Is that correct?
Well, it's more complicated than that. So. The. Typically how these, uh, typically how agreements are done for neighborhood zoning is you get a agreement letter from. My assumption. My assumption is that if there was appeal, the problem that stood would stand for an neighborhood zoning. But it's a question. The appeal changes the negotiation deal. But in theory, that could stand for private development. I think the concern is we lock a certain negotiation, there's a development commitment. Which, you know, it's the thought that that is binding. So if the appeal board takes it up, which is a different outcome. It's not really just So that's, that's the concern was that kind of reliability in terms of how a deal gets done with these development projects. It introduces uncertainty about how to do. And the deal is always very closely tied to the project. He's saying, for this example. Developer was okay with what zoning compromise was. Which is why they're okay. The agreements they put in place, but you know, that could change. So then, great time, so thank you for that. And this is a, it's my, okay, so I just say I follow that stuff on the side of it. So it is seven oh two. So, uh, thank you very much.
Yeah.
For this presentation as well. And I'm available, Sean has my contact information, this is part one question. Excellent. So also wants to, like, follow questions, yeah, like, other few folks, like, questions, and we're not able to get to you, but, um, yeah, any questions about what's elections, I may have a couple to. Thanks so much.
Thank you so much.
One with the two items.
Two items. Yeah, two, well, it's, it's one question.
Right.
So it's question two, question three, question. No, unfortunately, I have more presentations.
Thank you very much.
Don't forget your, don't forget your thumbs grabbers.
Yes.
Yeah, thank you.
All right, so hopefully everybody had an opportunity to look over the budget requests that remained in the sixth budget. Springboard for what we're going to be asking for this year. With whatever that is being discussed tonight. One thing that D C P did finally, that made me so happy, is that, remember we used to fight about putting a priority of one agency makes some of another agency, so we were asked to like, our sidewalks more important to you than that, you know, almost outreach, you know, and, and now they have these broken down by agencies, so we are now only prioritizing within the agency. And that is a big thing. I don't know if everybody picked up, but one of these brought to that most on the table where you signed this tonight. Because if you're going off the ones that were on the website, it won't be in order. So we're gonna use this, we're gonna start with our, this is gonna go like, everything, something we can go do quickly, and other things that people don't like some conversation. Starting with the one on top, and this is their. Right, but the first thing I have was just. First of all, before we jump into the items, does anybody have any questions about the process, like what we're doing here? I would love a recap, okay, I'd be best if I were to give you feedback.
Sure, so here's the deal. In, over the summer, community boards, most district managers mostly put together agendas for budget consultations with all of the city agencies. By all, I mean most, many, I mean many. And then in the fall, then those agendas are set up, sent off to each agency. Intend to give us a preview of their answers in writing prior to us having the consultations, but we did three full days plus the last two today of budget consultations with, I think, twenty, twenty agencies. And we discussed our budget priorities, our requests, you know, sort of the service bill agreement that comes in here. Suggest that we might need more three hundred. And we discussed that with parks. Then we take also over the summer, we reach out to the community, bring in community input on what they'd like to see maybe in terms of expensive capital projects. We then take that community input, our information from the budget consultations, and we boil it all into our budget priorities. And our budget priorities are supposed to match the district needs statement, so there's a bridge. If you have the district need, there should be a budget priority to help you address that need. Then we send these priorities to Department of City Planning and Office of Management and Budget, our due date is around October thirty first. And then they send those to the agencies. And from, in the winter, then the agencies send us their response to those requests. So you'll see the agency responses in this left right hand column. Too many of these agencies have things that we won't bust too much about tonight. Does not, does not support, cannot accommodate, supports but cannot accommodate. So we, then we have a conversation about their lack of responsiveness. That's called our letter of comment, and that goes out in the winter. And then all of that gets boiled into the final budget, the final executive budget. That is then negotiated with city council, working in New York City.
So what we're responding to is their response.
What we're looking at now, we're gonna ignore their responses a little bit because, Joel and I were talking about this before we got started. What we believe, because I don't know, what do we see as a need in this? Like, we're gonna tell they're gonna respond to it, this is our need, this is our expression of what this community district needs. And if very strong is coming down responses, then we'll have to find out a way to convince them or hold them accountable. But I think the slide is more on our need, a little bit less on our response.
I answered one last question and then I'll shut up.
Unless their response is positive, then we like.
Then we like. Are, what makes a response, in your experience, typically, what makes a request more likely to be successful? Is it being hyper-specific, like, there's a bunch of trees on Avenue H and Ocean that need to be burned? Or is it expressing things that feed up into how agents, like, there are a number of requests we have written where it's like, we need to fund X agency better, like, what, what's a better?
I think it probably depends on finally, um, some sort of magical formula in which our, our district needs finally find some a diagram with what they, what they've decided their priorities are. Because I, because, I mean, I can, we've asked for a new precinct house that's been recognized as a need for thirty years. So it certainly isn't waging them out. But I, but I still feel like we have to keep asking for it because we do recognize it as a need. The city has recognized me, we won't get it by asking necessarily, but we certainly won't get it by not asking. And I think it sort of bookmarks the history of the struggle for some of these needs. I think where we finally get things is when it does become priority for the agency as well. So it's not a very good answer, I mean, it's, it, this is a, it's a very banging your head against the wall process. And it's what's going to get us, what's going to be successful. Now, I think persistence, hopefully.
This is a lot to what you said, why is getting a precinct now a priority for them?
Oh, well, I mean, I can tell you what I said to NYPD at the budget consultation, I was beginning to lose my temper. I, I said to NYPD, Capital and Facilities. I asked them to have less patience with them and me. Then if they're recognizing this as a need, it's been expressed to me for over, you know, three decades back. Then people in the budget consultation, shrubby, like, yeah, we asked them, but they haven't given us the money yet. The shrub was pretty unacceptable and that they're, they're, they should have less patience and they should have more energy and sense of urgency behind their advocacy for the members of service and.
But are they just gonna wait until it collapses into the earth?
I mean, that would be more expensive to fit, right? So, I, yeah.
Yeah, one of, part of it is, they're getting requests from all the community boards across the city, so they can build these. And they have to figure out which of the twenty requests for the new precinct house is of their highest priority.
We're all of the highest priority, yeah. The problem is also land and having the space, we giving them, I think, four or five locations for that, like, this doesn't have square footage. And so one of our latest response to the draft was, you need to decrease the amount of space that you require to build a new precinct house because having one that is too small and dilapidated. It would be better to have one that's too small and new. And maybe you can use both sites or do something, you have, so have to start getting creative and then thinking about this. And so we'll go back at them with that again this year. Remember, they spent a million dollars trying to figure out whether or not they could knock down the whole precinct house and build on site. And they figured out what they put in. And my joke, now it's like a five-year-old joke, is like, I could have told you that for ten months.
Exactly, you know, the flooding, the, the heating, everything.
Why, the why, I, you know, the why and the hows are, I, I don't know, or else we would have more. If I could have figured it out, we would have, this wouldn't, we wouldn't be in the city.
Yeah. I have two questions. How is the outreach to the community done?
We put it on our website, we send it in our newsletters, we send it on the mailing, I make the mention of it at our, on our at our June meeting. And we put it on, I think, Link and Y C. The same way we do off each one. I bring it up at district service cabinets.
Thank you, and the other one, I don't know that you can answer. I wonder if this precinct issue has to do with talking, that they do take a lot of talking. So if you, they want the place that had a lot, a lot of talk.
Yeah, no, we're, yeah, I mean, that, that's a point I'll take, it's my definition.
This question is more grand scheme of the process. The budget, our budget priority of the district is through what? I mean, is that through the bar, bar room? Like, where did, how is this formed in the past?
Yes.
So these are going to multiple agencies, right? Under what charter, I think, the, like?
I can answer now. So this, this whole process is orchestrated and conducted by Department of City Planning, D C P. They do the district needs statement side of it, and O and B, Office of Management and Budget. They do the budget priority side. They facilitate our budget consultations with all of those agencies I just spoke about. And then they facilitate us getting the answers, last nine answers to our budget requests.
I have a thought question. I, silence is board now three years, and I went through this packet, and a lot of the things that are here are absolutely priorities, and there's been things that we talked about for my time here, but I'm very, so what is the accountability measure for D C P and O B M to make sure these things occur for the community boards? Because that, that's unacceptable to be talking about something thirty years later.
Well, sort of, I think that answer differs from item to item and expense to capital and year to year and administration to administration. So I don't think there's one good answer, but I think some of the answers will reveal itself for themselves in our conversation, if we want to start diving in on the items. I mean.
Yeah, I have a thought about that too. I think we'll get there.
Yeah, but just a partial answer, it's something I said to Commissioner Martin, Brooklyn Commissioner of Parks today, you know, said, look, look, we do what we can with what we have, and I said, and I admire your ability to do that, but this is not, we're not talking about what you have. We're talking about what we need. And if we don't have what we need, you doing the bit you can do, then what you, this is, this is where we talk about, do you have enough? This is where you're allowed to say, I won't have enough. But we'll get to that, we'll get to that when we talk about tree plantings.
So, last question, if I know we want to dive into it. Do you have any examples off the top of your head or things that you put in here that actually got him done? Over the last few years?
Tree planting used to be a fourteen-year cycle, now it's a seven-year cycle. You know, road, road, certain road conditions, um, did get, you know. Like safer, safer pedestrian crossings, we did one year have some success, and then we backpedaled on success, getting more school crossing guards. That has been provided. We've got more with small, like, small trucks at Department of Sanitation, more holsters. The year of the holster, we had a good year of holsters one year. So, yeah, I mean, little by little chipped away at certain things. My big tip, you know, basic items, my the precinct. M L P is a new one, yeah, we'll get to those. But, yeah, I mean, every once in a while, we get somewhere. Yeah, I mean, I think another, another example of that is if, near to you is that I'm so frustrated with how far we got and then how many steps we had to take back from how far we got in getting the new brick closet into the. And so I have started to say to M T A, stop, don't be surprised when you come into this community if you're not firmly received with new assets, when we don't see you taking care of the assets that are already here. And so that's my new mantra. I'm just, yeah. Yeah, so, and, you know, D O T too, I, you know, the, the community doesn't feel heard in what they're asking for with, you know, you know, how many times have we asked for things on Avenue H and Arvel Road and stuff like that? It doesn't qualify, you can't stop sign, and, and, and the traffic count is not there, and the speed isn't there, and so no stop sign, no. Yeah, I mean, so that, but that's just as, right, going back to, to, you know, Nikki's question, yes. This is a frustrating exercise, let's start.
That's something about that too, but, um, I think there's another.
Okay, so jumping into school construction, I'm sorry, for many minutes, here's another thing. If you wait long enough, it won't be a need anymore. So many, many years, we, our, our elementary schools were vastly overcrowded, they are no longer vastly overcrowded. And in fact, as a district, they, they aren't considered overcrowded according to blue book numbers, so.
Maybe, even with the flat side.
P S one ninety-three is at seventy-four percent, two seventeen is at ninety percent, one thirty-nine is at ninety-two percent, P S one thirty-four is at ninety percent. Close to capacity, but, but the blue book numbers are not showing this as a district any need. We've got one fifty-two at one twenty-four percent, but.
But.
That's last year.
Yeah, but that's what I'm saying, does this account for the flat side law that was the state that is being?
I listen to this year's blue book, you know, the, the. Has to be utilization.
But, but that doesn't have a conference, um, the rollout of it, because that was until twenty twenty-seven, it might end up being.
So happy to leave this in here as a need that while, while, while percentages have gone down. There's still close capacity and that's size decreases, we, pardon me, we still see this in the districts.
I just ask that, I'm sure you have a good structure for it, and it's like, why do the capital and the expense things, like, by agency together? Because sometimes it's a little wonky which ones goes where, for like, awesome board members, um, by agency, like, I don't know.
I don't know that I'm organized enough.
Okay, no, sorry.
Because school construction, I'm sorry, doesn't have any expense.
Oh, and we'd be flipping back to. Oh, no, no, I might, yeah, yeah, I guess when we just like get to like, I don't know, P E P or whatever, I think we have some involved, right? Yeah, I guess just, maybe I'm just apologizing in advance if I gave you an expense thing that should be capital.
So, okay, is that, is that, uh, is there a general agreement in the room that you want to keep and seek to expand and seek capacity? Just with this other frame, looking to the future?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, yes.
We should be planning for the future.
Okay, I'm also gonna keep in here that, and, and this, you know, was close to your point. The expect, I, I'm gonna add that F D A needs to increase their headcount on their community engagement people. They no longer.
That they do respond to the C S C, they just don't show up for the community board, so I'm wondering if there's a way.
I was wondering if we'd leverage superintendents to get this one.
Yeah.
They go to the C S C, yeah.
The C S C has to submit a, yeah, they have to submit one of these to the F D A. And they're responsive to them, so hopefully. I don't know.
That's why I was on D C page, shut up.
Yeah, they do show up for the. Yeah, they do show up for the C S C.
Okay.
That goes back to just my question that I had about wording, right? Like, is, is, is like, you know, something like this, and I'm sure I'm officially overthinking it, but if the real priority, like, to narrow this request down, if the capacity issue is not currently an issue to remove that from the request, request of like, S T A people have to come to community board.
No, we both, the class side, the, the capacity question is a capital budget request.
Okay.
And the, um, headcount increase in order to have the capacity to join us at the, you know, meetings and be representative, um, in the community is an expensive request.
And I agree with that.
It's just efficient for them. I don't understand how they think a half hour with us, once we're closing here, they're doing a position on their staff, but then answering the many complaints that pop up when people see scaffolding around the school and then we have to back them down and figure it out and feel the complaint. It's just the news. Um.
Can I just ask?
A question. I may be the only dissenting voice here, but, um, everybody's question is up. So if our schools are currently under, we have some capacity, because we're just talking about this long one, wait a minute. So ask the agency to still to build or expand existing public schools. Am I saying that correctly?
Build, expand, or be space.
Not the whole index thing with.
No.
Are you looking at undercapacity with me coming up about that thing?
The annexes actually are.
Here it says that the annexes were, I know it's a lot, but the annexes were over, and that's what I'm serious about, that's what the problem was. So what are we saying we're under, is that the school and the annex?
So P S, P S one fifty-two is one forty-six, it's now one twenty-four.
Oh, I didn't.
Um, the other schools that are over a hundred percent utilization are three thirty-eight, it's one thirteen. Then our high schools, you don't want to worry about. High schools are different.
They're all working good at that one.
Morrow was one twelve, Midwood is one fifty, a hundred fifty percent capacity. It's been more. And, uh, the Brooklyn College High School is one twenty-four.
Yeah.
That's something we have to report in, uh, ninety-four percent capacity.
But you don't see something there or there?
Oh, I don't know, so scaffolding, they're probably doing this.
Construction.
Yeah, I could look it up. I don't think we're correcting the slide.
Uh, are we good on that?
Yeah.
There's a clarifying question. Um, I know there's a number of these, the most, maybe it does not. Probably, please contact the D C P directly and promptly for more information. So. I just, what does that mean?
Well, so, I mean, my, my response to that is like, I contact every single one of these agents in the whole of our, yeah. I mean, this is, this was, when D C P designed this platform, they have a drop-down menu that goes to, and, and sometimes for disparage, you say something disparaging like, some. They did like, so one of the things I'm asking D C P to do, and this kind of gets into the debate of the process, not the, not the budget requests is, I'm asking D C P to involve all of the drop-down responses, that sort of agencies no longer have that option. And they have to use their words instead of their fingers, um, to answer us. And I don't know if they'll accommodate that. Yeah, well, please.
Yeah.
Yes. Can we move on to N Y P D? Yeah. This was, this was, this was a fun one, because last year, uh, the budget consultation, N Y P D brought up to help them, to advocate for them to have more tow scripts. Except like a tow, a tow yard.
Oh, yeah.
And so we asked for, and then the response came that does not support, cannot accommodate, we asked, you know, just point yourself.
He's moved on.
Just because you asked us to ask.
Exactly.
So this year, they said they don't really need the tow front space, but they do need large tow vehicles. And so, um, because, because the service delivery being into buying plus, because we did so, 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 so many calls from community members who have an abandoned vehicle or, you know, a vehicle without plates or whatever, on there. Or the commercial vehicles that are parking number nine, um, the tractor trailers that are attached or unattached. I mean, and every single day we get one of these things. So we see this as a need because when we call the precincts there, well, we'll see if we can set up an operation because we don't have a large tow vehicle available to us and all of that stuff. So we'll ask.
And, uh, just maybe a minor question, and I'm not sure if it's somehow like against the rest of it, but can we add, um, something about like cars with for sale signs? Because I understand if you're not supposed to have a car that has a for sale sign parked in, street parking.
Yeah, that's not a budget question that I.
Oh, I just meant like in the language for what they're going to get for. Yeah.
Do they tow cars that have a for sale sign?
They're, they're supposed to, you're not allowed to have a for sale sign on the street.
They don't do issue of. So anyway, if you want us to know it, just.
They do not have plates.
I understand you guys, it's considered bad at that point, but. Wrong, we're not a lawyer.
Or, or is it, well, if it doesn't have plates, there is definitely. Of course I have plates on.
Now, D, yes, and like a tow, even if it doesn't have plates, if it's a luxury or a remodel vehicle, they still can tow it. If it's a garage vehicle with no plates, then work, like, that's what I always thought for, like, please be a.
If, if I'm wrong, if that's supposed to be something that can tow, don't add it, but.
You know what, sometimes a garage vehicle will have a plate on it.
I'm trying to understand, you're even saying, it's currently sitting at three weeks on plates on it, just because it's a remodel vehicle. Windows going to exist.
And that was, that's on record, by the way.
Go ahead, Lawrence, yeah.
Where, witness a little, that's the only, if a car has license plate and it has a for sale sign, it can't be towed?
I don't know, I will check with the precinct on that. I will happily, like, which if it's a program, I will.
I just, in my subconscious brain, I see a lot from people about something needing to happen from it. And so I just wanted to elevate, and if it's not appropriate for this part, I'm sure you can handle it.
I mean, I know where the used car salespeople are and where those vehicles are usually part of the, you know, term or whatever. So they simply think, I know who these car salespeople are, and they try to deal with them directly. Um, I don't like that as the number one.
What question?
Thing.
You feel like we had this, we had this conversation. Know that. Precinct asks, okay, this is number one, but I think you always have this conversation. Out of those three, which one do you think actually would have slightly?
I kind of know, maybe.
You disagree with, like, you think maybe that shouldn't be our thinking with the.
This year.
Versus like, well, we, we need the precinct.
This year, I think, I think, you know, to Nikki's question, we don't know what we're going to get, we're probably not getting a lot of this. And so for me, because I'm so envious in my opinion for not having that sense of urgency, I want to, I want to have a sense of urgency and other. And, um, the very day after this N Y P D budget consultation, the, the precinct got a complaint from one piece of process saying, we need you to stop. And so it was like, not only is your own department not sort of advocating for you, they turn around the very next day and they get hard on you. And so I'm, you know, look, we bounced it up and down, we passed it up and down our priorities year after year after year. Um, I think this year I'd like to put a request for the police precinct and an adjustment to the criteria for relocating that higher up. Um, I'd like to then put the tow thing twice because that's really service delivery driven. And I want, like, that's how we're feeling our community by prioritizing that request on the basis of how many complaints we get. And then renovate or upgrading other old precinct houses, something that I almost feel like not feeling, but I, I think. Because it's, it does need this one, it wanted that, it floods and it leaks and it speaks.
Yeah, I was wondering.
Now, one, now, one thing is, one thing is for an increasing house, and the other thing is, like, in the meantime, you need to fix the one that's, that you got.
You have to do one by the same time.
That's because the, if, if you read that, what they are telling them, they're just, that's the drop-down menu limitation.
Um, for ordering, I don't know if everyone agrees with this. I think I definitely agree moving up the requisitations language around sizes for a new, um, precinct. But I do think in the meantime, we can put the one about renovate the current, making sure that work orders are met, um, different things will be won, then followed by, um, by the location and then the toll nine, I'm not.
One thing about consulting, um, yeah, my good minority, not the majority one. Um, I remember some transportation committees, we had a committee, we were in N Y P D, uh, working twenty-four, and there was folks complaining about the fact that, like, trucks don't be towed or something like that. There's issue with that, we don't have like the tow space for it. So it's like a tow yard type of, of a couple thing, so.
This year, they said that that wasn't a problem. This year, they, 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 they walked, they walked that back.
Because they showed the. Not for the tow yard.
Right, there's a request for the tow yard and the vehicle, I think they were folding together. So we were going to maintain their request for large tow vehicles to get these trucks off the street. And, and then just brought the request for the tow yard.
When they, the whole vehicle would have to stay in the district?
No.
It's no, uh, precinct, you know, wherever, six, seven precincts, whatever. Have you got room for this, and then bring it over there?
No, it goes to the, no, it goes to the P D pound, by the, by the maybe, or. It's not. No, the only time there's local towing is when the, uh, the film people move your car up or G O T, move your car because they're doing, you know, maybe, so you're not being towed because of a violation here, it's moving you out of the way. Other than that, that goes to the tow.
My only common疑问 is just like, while I feel for the police and our district and the precinct and that sucks, but they have to be in that house, like, I like the principle you mentioned of what actually generates service cases from the community. And using that to define how we figure out what's the priority. I haven't been arrested in a few years, so I haven't been down to the precinct, but unless I'm missing something, I don't know how many service pieces that generates.
No, this is the thing, it's like, do we want, do we want, you know, community request to drive or amount of time on the wish list to drive it or so, but, I mean, I'm, I'm in, so whoever wants to propose order.
Well, we have one out, we have, you know, and I'll put something up. And you just restate like, um.
You want, you want repair of the precinct house, repair of the precinct house and then tow.
Correct.
But you want towing.
I want towing, it's with the community, it's what creates, generates most service requests. So I think it's like, maybe what we can vote on is the principle order.
I guess quite a fiery for me, why do we need the tow trucks? It's, most of the towing happening through the, the pound and the, I think I'm, I'm confused about that.
It's both, um, you know, the precinct has to sit there until the road to companies come, so it's, it's really kind of, you know, um, but for the large tow, for the large vehicles, those are P D tow trucks and they need special.
Well, where they have a facility or not, they don't have parking here.
Okay, again, they said they have the parking.
Right.
That is no longer a request that O Y P D made of us.
Yeah.
They just need the vehicles is what they said.
And they had requested space and now they said they have space. So is it a vehicle or equipment that they hold?
Right.
Proper equipment.
That we didn't vote on the order, I think there's another order. I don't want to make fun of, it was just, I like, no, we have the, we have the board on the order anyway.
Well, I think the current order is to. Supposedly, that order, or do we?
Yeah, I go, just take the whole, like, the.
It's even keep the same or change through, that's the order. Section, yeah.
Yeah. Motion.
So I have a motion to keep the N Y P D capital order passes. Second, okay, so all those in favor?
Keeping the order.
Yes.
Which is towing capacity.
Renovate.
Renovate.
Yeah, so if you're voting yes, then you agree with the current order.
That's fine.
All right, so all those in favor?
Okay. Fire department, I think we only have one capital request here, and that is just for, uh.
Right, how many people voting yes?
Well, almost everybody. Um, the fire department station houses, we don't have a generator, so I was just going to leave this as this. I don't have any specific jobs that they, that they need, but none of them. Many years, and none of them are. I don't know, because we're high ground and it makes sense for us to have generators.
But it's, it's not marketing saying.
Uh-huh.
It's not marketing saying.
Not yet. One back. No, what they communicated is they get their generators through a different source of, like, the foundation funding and then they put it. And so they have a priority list and they're working their way down the list and every house will have a generator someday. So I keep that in mind.
So they're probably want the.
I, I also wanted to make, this will be an expense request, but since we're on F D Y, um, I think that they could increase their headcount in F D Y planning. Um, they say it takes, uh, thirty days for them to get, another agency makes a plan, this is the most, we should use the D O T and the high plans. And they turn the bike plane, plan to F D Y, and then it takes F D Y thirty days to remark on the bike plane, and that's ludicrous. I think they should have their notifications sooner, but it should take them, like, that would only make sense if we hadn't invented evening.
Move out, I didn't spell that shot.
Uh, when I worked in Staten Island, I was the director of Staten Island Borough Office, and we used to have inter-agency meetings, like, it was so functional, it's the dysfunction. It's like, it's because Staten Island is out there and like, it's like, when you're in that, like, outer reaches of the, of the, of, of the great nation, you can kind of do stuff, right? And we have very close relationships with council members and the borough presidents across the street, council members down the hall, I'll think of short. But we had inter-agency meetings, and I, so I can answer the question why it takes a month for F D Y to sign off on stuff. Because there's like one guy.
Simon Rousner.
Okay, yes, Simon. So, so the, yeah, but even if you wish that was happening in two weeks, Simon has stuff coming in.
That's why I'm saying increase the headcount in, in F D Y.
Okay.
Okay, so I motion and revise your request and ask for two Simon.
Okay, that will be fifty percent, we're, we're buying to keep this capital request. F D Y did not indicate a request for any, you know, like, returning capital or anything like that. Now we're at our, we're at our big heat for, you know, Liz, I think you might help me out here, but, you know, D E P, it's so hard to even know what to ask for and what they have and what you can do and where you can do it. And whether we've got clay or soil or sand underneath the grass and the trees in the district, I mean, it's not very same. But, um, so our request last year was like, we, we need this mitigation, we need, um, we need drainage improvement, we need flood mitigation. You tell us what's available, you tell us where to ask for it. And, you know, and their response was not responsive, but, I mean, you all said you took a look at this and if there's any suggestion on how to better advocate for what we need, even being as general as this is, I'm all ears.
I guess I have a question about this, um, you know, I, I guess, having spoken with D E P a lot on the flooding in our district, um, just for some information for people, one of the main issues here is that our sewers are just over capacity and it's combined sewer systems.
Our sewers are just over capacity and it's combined sewer systems. So it backflows from um, you know, from the sewer, it's not taking enough out to to where it needs to be. Um, so sometimes the back flows into basement, it back flows on street flooding, et cetera. Um, some of that, this is a little out of touch, there's a parallel project um. In the profit park area to do lake shore restoration, a lot of the water that starts at our um, district comes from that the park. Um, but I guess one question I have is, would it be helpful if we were like more specific with like location or ideas for places to put? Um, you know, like where, it's like we know now where they're putting, at least that's phase one, where they're putting um, various uh, affordable pavement. And I know that there's a section that's around, I think it's around Avenue again, I know you have the map from this, where we have a lot of complaints through um, our fellow, our planning fellow. Um, that hasn't been addressed yet. So I wonder if we want to specifically ask for permeable paving there. And I guess my other idea of like, if we can't get, you know, if we're, again, I am not a flooding person. I mean, I'm a flooding person in the sense that I've been. Working with Sean and others on this issue for a long time. Not a flooding person by trade, not a flooding planning expert. Um, but um, I wonder if there is something where maybe, you know, thinking about things like. Bio swales, if maybe um, you know, we'd ask for, if there's like locations in there that could have rain gardens added that maybe, maybe like around schools or something, because it would add some safety on the street. I don't know if that's a different way we could.
I mean, we have brought our flooding locations to their ten. Yeah, through various other means and maybe not. And I think in some years we had. Locations listed even can, we then have to go back to see if it was two years, one year, a few years, three years ago. And then what they did back then was like. This request can, this item contains more than one request contacted the agency.
Well, maybe should we put each of like the main sections that get flooding with what they have done so far.
Of locations and then say permeable pavement and or bio swales in these cyclones. Should hang a drill.
I was gonna say, shouldn't the agency know where the locations are? Like, but like, don't say based on complaints or like, they should know already, right? But I'm saying, I don't know if it helps by putting it in.
Yeah, but it doesn't, it doesn't hurt us either to have on record that that we that we are aware of these locations and that we're at. I mean, some of this, of this is to Mickey's original, a lot of this is signaling and place holding. Or requests that may or may not get addressed, but if we don't mention that we, that there is a need, then they'll never get it.
I just like.
Is that an option for every street in the borough?
I don't think so, because I think it depends on what infrastructure is allowed and 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 where it needs.
Also, what what are we doing? Let's say the paving is not a D E P situation. That's the part we try to secure.
Now, the permeable pavement is indeed, that's that's many like D B C.
Okay, so then you're not. You have a paving project for this area.
Well, stuff is funded through the agency and then the agency at the end.
If D O T is gonna have a rip the street, the whole car is writing a red payment. That might, and that could have been permeable pavement. Why are they wasting money? How do we communicate with them? Hey, if you have a paving project, these areas. Please work with us, work with. You see, instead of you paving the street, you get them to do it so that.
They don't do the permeable pavement street by street. It's a very, it's a much bigger, broader project, which is why D B C oversees it. But but I think to your point, having a location listed here, then maybe we'll send up a flight.
If you don't rip up the street in this way, one of us work together, you know, but if you have X map.
Especially if it's a street that's adjacent to where they're doing the projects.
I just wanted to note too that just, just a weird thing. A lot of the permeable paving that they're putting in this area isn't specifically around flooding complaints. It's around like. Broader planning. So I think that part of the goal of adding some flooding complaints is just to be clear, you need to address these needs that community members have on just these like high level things that you're. Calculating probably very smartly in a back room about what's going on with the floods.
Right. But I also want to hold accountable to like, if if we're not asking everybody the same, we don't be like, no. Yeah, yeah, like this platform game is 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 not the way we're gonna get somewhere. And so um. That request, another thing I was gonna add, ask them towards a D E P infrastructure assessment status can be worked by, truly just by community. Um, and then that may get somewhere.
Wondering if that hole from around the circle into Brooklyn South Yard and uh, Coney Island. Across Hatton and Churwood and that's not an issue for them?
It is. I just, I, I think it's certainly on their radar and it's certainly being considered and it's part of the lake shore project, capital project. It's just huge, like dealing with this huge. I mean, I sometimes feel like instead of asking somebody to fix a pothole, let's just put up a sign and instead of calling it a speed home, we call it a speed dip. You know, that's just like useful if you've got, um, instead of like so kayak, you must have to kind of call you.
Oh, so I was just gonna say that I think, you know, I think that it's, well, it's important when individuals. Call up, yeah, they call three one one or whatever and say, hey, it's got flooding problem. Again. This process. I think helps to organize it, maybe give um, give some weight behind it to say, hey, you know, we just get manager, we have a community board on this issue. And we are pushing for these needs to be addressed.
That's true. And that's true. And I also think to add to that. That's also a negative on the process either bill. Because Sean is a district manager, is not doing issue manager because of these happen in the D A's. And several years now, the the drum that we need is over the day to day of all three one one. We're not gonna mobilize resources unless we hear what. And so we're in a rock and a hard place because the three one stuff you're mentioning and some of those stuff and about with those conversations. But Sean is saying, Dr. Wood, you're like, this is your job. How do you not know? But this is, this is where we're at, where. We're having this idea of signaling the locations because this is not the converse where they're coming to us and saying, hey. In the past four weeks, we had thirty six calls about this. Are we getting this too? Right? We're not.
Checking this one data then too. Okay, so I'm just gonna sum this one up. We're gonna keep this as a priority, capital priority. We're going to add locations and we're gonna um, maybe add a layer. Ability asking them for the new assessment. We're gonna skip D C P because I was. Going straight to that page. Because it's not, because now that they've ordered these according to agencies, I no longer have to tell them that how we prioritize.
Got it. Is there a way, is this a phase that we can add to the maybe an expense way around increasing for affordability measures?
Maybe, yeah, let's talk about that when we get to expense, because I also want to ask D C P for um. Never mind, it's someone here want to ask. Okay, but yeah.
I I do actually have a D C P button.
It's a capital.
I think so. And not one hundred percent sure. Um, you know, I I do remember, um, you know, one of the things that I was thinking about through both, you had mentioned at the previous board meeting. But how there were lots of requests for affordable housing and so forth. Um, one of the things that I've been thinking about a lot is just how we have very little M I H map in our district. Um. You know, my understanding is that the way you get M I H map in the district is by rezoning for additional housing. I don't know if there's something we want to ask, if there's any funds to like look at a community process for that in our district.
I think that's a policy, um, with policy because I think that they're not looking, they're not not looking at that here because they don't have the budget to do it.
So yeah, I guess I'm thinking about that expense that we can put in this somehow. I don't think it's a budget thing, maybe a policy now.
Um, but it could have affordable housing here, not on H P D. And H P D's answers to our requests for our district are. Just their policy statements. And so I wanted to try to hold them accountable for like, we worry that you have these programs, please give us district level data. And what are you doing at the district level to to protect and have um. Affordable and extremely affordable housing and. I wanted to get specific and drill down on the number of units that would match our population when I do this sort of assessment of how many people who live at thirty percent of A M I in this district. And look at the percentage of housing that's at thirty percent of A M I in this district. I want to just be specific about, here's the gap. Yeah, I mean.
What's the difference between making this capital request? Or the more or the more. Or obviously, probably. Different things to a thought and then you request Liz was making earlier the M I A thing, it was a balance policy thing or what's the difference? I'm not looking at recent like M I A stuff and.
Liz is talking about rezoning and with H P D, it's about the application of a program that exists and increasing that program capacity in order to be here. That's how I see it. I mean, I think it's right. I think they're both.
It's not like it's a shitty housing versus like potentially.
Yeah.
It's like about like this part, I think is more about preserving existing, expanding existing housing and fulfilling the gap for people who have lower, maybe I'm wrong about that, but that's my interpretation and so. Um, I I think one of us. Yeah, I would also like to read there's a, in my age, it's mandatory inclusion housing, so that stands for. So definitely that. Projects like newly built projects go off and be required. Mandatory to put in there, but these other programs like. Truly low. Uh, affordable ones like um. Set rather senior affordable housing, some of these others that are actually here to much lower income populations than the M I H, which is what you will usually see all like. Housing connect, drop in times again, a hundred thirty percent A M I. And so it's actually, it's affordable, but it's, you know, one question that itself is affordable.
Question is more, it sounds like those are two different policy outcome. And pretending to respond. But that that was more policy oriented, not capital oriented, just to. Same in the interior, I think that the goals are all great, all quite important, but I'm trying to figure out. We should be adding that thing or not, and why the distinction between. Like if this is in here, then why aren't you thinking about the difference?
Well, I guess like the thing that I'm concerned about a little bit is that my reading of data in this area is that most of the development is by right and thus doesn't trigger any required affordable housing. And so I'm trying to think, how can we help ensure that when there is new development in the area, especially if it isn't something that is getting. H P D fund because like isn't being developed by the city is a hundred percent affordable because those are rare and few and far between, like. How do we ensure that new development is best matching the needs of our community and, you know, triggering the low income option for mandatory inclusionary housing so that. We get more of those new homes instead of getting none of those new homes, which is kind of the majority of the development in the area right now. And.
Okay, so fund a study to review potential additional M I H. Moving or M I H locations.
Yeah, I don't know if that's a process that will happen in like the Coney Island area, that city for always funding or something. I just don't know, like. I don't know if they need funding to have the people do this or if it's, they don't, they have the funding, but they don't have the people looking at it.
No, if it's funding this. But now it would be P C P that will be asked to look into. Location to map them according to.
Nothing question on H P D. Um, I don't know. I know we made requests about like increasing staff to handle certain things. So um, H P D handles like uh, landlord complaint, right, and enforcement of them. Can we, do we get three for each agency? Can we add another and about enforcement or do you?
Intention to those rules, so what are you?
I think, I think they maybe want an expense.
That is an expense to increase the head headcount of H P D enforcement or investment, aid of officer.
Yes, I think, yeah, H P D is terror wet enforcing on.
Their headcount is really low. They're not, I think they're fifty percent, something that below headcount.
Yeah.
So another thing that they said is that they're, they don't have them, this salary. Guidelines for those jobs are not attracting people, but that definitely has to stay in our request because.
Yeah.
You know, we have. Eight hundred housing code violations per one thousand units of housing. We have something like four hundred and fifty serious housing code violations.
Oh, it's always here. Oh.
Well, yeah, but I, I think what we're, this is a really good suggestion to create that.
Yeah, create, yeah, create. Exactly, because I feel like, yes, I agree. So I think it's, it's like folded into like the affordable housing request.
It is an expense.
Okay.
This is just the capital section. This is all later.
Okay, 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 okay.
Have we mentioned we update the numbers and expenses though to have the four fifty series violations? I think it just has a vague.
They'll do that.
No problem.
But one thing I wanted to talk about here is, you know, they're cheeky little like, oh, if you've got places where we could have seen this little Sean, because there's some talk about. That building on the new school parking lot, there was also a building over our libraries and they were like, well, you didn't roll through a few sections. I'm like, I'd be happy to introduce you to the. Brooklyn public life. They all Google it. So they, they want us to do have, to be able to put it here as a central service agency. Like, you know, they can be. That's what they need. I'm like, okay.
If they're willing to.
And they're just asking us to broker a conversation, like we're not going to the people who live around the Portelli Road Library and who are like, hey, that's what you're gonna get nice rise of residential library. So I I will follow up, but you know, I think we put it in our letter of comment last year, but if that's the way they're gonna vote this year, if we're putting this in, um, I will add, and you would be happy to broker.
Well, I mean, I I would be happy to have to assist you, you know, but just like.
Listen, well, listen, well, what we have.
I like her name of that.
Would that be something that like, how can I be media? It's like, yeah, so so we're first today invited some people who maybe have some common interests here.
Yes, so excited for this opportunity. Let's go with that.
My James said it's only ten. I have to go, but like, I'm looking, I'm just at accountability for this, right? I'm looking at the calendar and thinking about. The district service needing. And is it useful to have community members or board members show up to that and be like, what's?
They're not public meetings.
They're not public meetings. So it's just, even though it's not like, you don't have to answer that now, but like for me, I feel like there's sort of this. Narrow channel through which, which Sean, you do a very valid job of like expressing this feedback, but is there something either board members? Or that board members can ask community members to do to be like.
So and then we can bring in additional, like, you know, this is something that we tried years ago, but let's bring, bring the idea back that like every committee oversees. You know, portraying yourself and that we can start reviewing our requests through those committees on a more regular basis and, you know, even. Feed the narrative through the committees and maybe plan committee meetings that resonate with these requests so that we're, so we're not playing. Still be whack a mole, but like with a smaller board.
You're using this as a framework for what committees do during the year is a very. I would like that. That would be cool.
Okay.
Sorry, I have to go, guys. Thank you so much.
I have a quick question about the idea of like potentially having, you know, reaching out to these conversations for bringing the libraries and so forth. My understanding is that E D C is doing some of that work on in other parts of the city. Is there something we should be adding to like? Ask them to consider art for that? I just noticed that they're one of the. I don't know, like, you're the expert here, but maybe other agencies can pressure other agencies together.
I'm not an expert on E D C at all. I think they're so. I don't, but you know, I'd look into that. D O T. I just. That should have. Yep. I don't know though if it's really a capital request at this point. I I just put it there because. It's that throwing everything against the wall sort of thing. So maybe I I I will relieve the capital team of looking at it.
I feel like I I do this in the same vein.
Hey, you know what? Actually. Hey, you know what? Actually.
We also have an expense request that's.
Right. So, you know, on the capital, but here's where New Kirk Plaza is, by the way. D O T was like finally said. Well, well, we'll do the thing. Well, according to the best possible, we're working out with M T A, M T A and like D O T, you know. You know, the volume of everyone's conversation got to this agreement and the agreement had to go to everybody's lawyers and it took a little while and then the lawyers made some agreements and then. The thing that had had to happen next was that. The M T A had the contract with an engineering company to do engineering study. That's where they're at now. They are letting a contract. For this engineering study to take place and listen, you know, maybe this something's wrong is like the engineering study will be like, okay, if you're gonna put tables and chairs, they can't, you know, nothing can weigh more than this. It can't be on this side of the thing. No plantings, you can't grow corn on the on the plaza, like whatever it's gonna say you can't do. Um, and that'll be fine because then F B C will agree that never. And um, or or build a eight times stage or anything like that, or add lighting to the. Whatever they say you can't do. That's that's where it's at. So I couldn't keep a capital placeholder here to accommodate any capital needs that are about provided for. Um, other, other. Rehab bridges. Oh, wait. Did he accomplish this one? The H P um, the H P D, you know, which I got. Yeah, and I think they are. It's in the bus pattern map.
Okay.
Um, but so that's the sweet part. Um. I will call this recall. Sometimes you can just hold it there until the job is done and we call it continue. It's called continue. I think so.
Great. Oh, great. I've been complaining about this one like.
I, yeah.
We should. Walk there tomorrow and be like.
That answers to bridges. I think we have to keep our bridges in there. Um, their answer is. That that stretch. Um. That is reversing. Over the. Um. You know, where New Kirk Plaza is and the post office and all the others.
Like, you know, and they say that they can't just the condition of the road.
Yeah, but so many, we think that they can't, they don't even have that new component contract right now because of the um. The review questions over New Kirk Plaza make it difficult for them to add that to the component contract. So it has to be some standalone contract and they haven't. I mean, I think it can be paid it. They just can't fix the undergirding of the bridge. Everly is actually. To release funded.
It's funded?
Yeah.
So that's like, yeah.
This is this is all.
But that kind of goes to Nikki's question too, like when do we get what we want? Like if you ask for it long enough, eventually it will be a need in their eyes too. That's a Beverly Road Bridge was a preliminary design last year. We'll ask them to come to us please.
I know there's a lot of like reconstruction, something like the. Like between here and the part of um, like gas lines and something else, and they're very slow to re-leave after that. It's actually why we can like write in here that like. When all of that work is completed to get on the priority saving cycle because the rope is very, very open. Um, after all.
I don't think it's even the T's responsibility at that point. It's the utilities responsibility.
Yeah, but I think.
What they do is is.
Yeah, they just lack a a patch and the patch is off.
It's usually because there's other work pending that the patch is there for. Give me, we'll handle that for service delivery. So you can make locations and I'll and I'll and I'll request the status of those locations.
Sorry.
They might be making their way down too, because like they they just did.
Yeah. Yeah, it's like a big project in the area. It's not just like one for you, which is why I'm kind of carrying through the journey in here, you know?
They need like the whole cherry. Why was it a row on fault? I don't know. It's so like this. Put Dana and Crosswalk. I I. I think they can take Crosswalk. They don't usually put a crosswalks where they're unimpressed, but I'm I'm going. I'm chatting with them. And I promise I'm working on it. We get to rotate and tonight number four, they're trying to get across speed.
We hear you.
Yeah.
Um, so now I'm relating.
Trench conditions happening on the list since I've been with the manager and now they're now they're saying they're not only I may not be doing trench conditions, they're going to. Never do a trench condition that's standalone. It's only when they're doing street rehabs. I don't know whether keeping this on here or not is a good thing, but um. It uh, I have the locations where we have trench. You know what trenches are? You know, the trench repair. Even it's just back in the days when they did a bunch of road repairs, they they backfilling roads with. Substandard material and then those roads started caving in and for a long time, for years after that, a handful of years after that, D E P actually had this trench. Trench funding to fill them in and they were actually proactive about it for a time and then they ran out of that money. That money never made it back in and then they started sinking. And so then they started fixing the sinking trench conditions by playing. Um, asphalt over it and I'm I'm not a physicist, but I think if something's falling down and we put something heavy on something.
So I I guess I kind of feel like keeping it in here, but keeping it last priority just because it should be noted.
We change the language kind of to Max, something he had been earlier around like. Said they said we'll do it along with like other repairs.
Yeah, yeah.
Also, D O T is not finding on funding projects, so we based on trench trench restorations. We will be working on initiating state of repair reconstruction projects that include trench restorations. So I wrote, since trenches have been on the list for ten plus years. Um. Provide a list of state of good repair. Projects by community districts so that we can see really.
Yeah.
Every one of these like. Go off. Height that mark it. Curve and road. That's. You know, that height. Exceed that and the person said they want to. If the city was putting notice that's. Obviously, when I notice. Why don't we. Every single attorney is. Isn't it?
Give us a list so we can share it with.
All attorneys. Has the list of all the locations that you should be where go measure the curve heights and and put your signs up as soon as they get their lawsuit.
Do you would think so, Marty? But actually, we tried to use that argument, the tree pruning when the controller, years ago, when Scott's here, I was kind of, they did a report showing that for every dollar slash from the forestry cleaning budget. There was an X number increase in dollars.
It didn't work?
Tree branch. No.
Well, I have heard that following three one one reports to document those positions can be.
Yeah, they can.
Oh, I just. You can all do it. Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay, transit authority. That kind of brings me along a bit because transit authority just meeting president. And so they never answered them, but um. I don't mind if you can share. Is there any, is there any question or concern about the border of these or are there any other requests that you want on here? No, but have you got any of these? No.
Only thing is that, yeah, all I know is that I go to church every regularly and so. Yeah, so I've seen it beside it's the biggest report found in. I think they have it worked up.
Both. Yeah.
It's that it's supposed to be putting in the elevator.
That's what they're supposed to be.
Yeah, that's funny to add in the touchscreen. I thought it was there.
What do you mean?
There's like areas that are important.
It ends up in the middle of the.
Yeah, that's what I mean.
Yes, right. You know, sort of wrong.
Yes, that's what I meant.
Is that the same as this second one, though? That's what I was trying to.
I don't know if I should keep that on there. Years ago, then people from that was still U C P um, said asked us to, you know, that the train station closest to their facility was not A D A compliant. And it's, you know, just one of the great ironies of having one of the biggest, one of the most dense populations of multiply handicapped people on a block with a police precinct that is not A D A accessible. And surrounded by subway stops that are not A D A compliant.
They they they.
They haven't. Nobody, I haven't heard.
Most of the most of the.
None of us. Yeah. I think it was sort of a logic with.
Um, keep it on, take it off. I'm at. My question was just if like, I know, I know we're not saying we should take off the one because it's happening at church. I think we should keep it on to put them accountable. I was just, yeah, I just want to just preface one of those.
But it also says we want like right in conjunction like.
Yes, no, see, my my question is just knowing that that project is happening, should we start identifying additional locations? Like my explanation is we should keep the other one on because. They had flagged that there's more than four stops in a row in that part that don't have um, accessibility and they're looking at locations or M T A had at some previous meeting. Flag that that would be something they're looking at picking which of those four. So I think that would be us having a voice and do this one. Yeah, I guess my my other question is just should we identify that maybe New Kirk Plaza could get upgraded on another local and express stop as of the future or who like to see them?
I think given Sean's proposed update.
Yeah.
To fund whatever upgrades come out of that engineering project. I'm wondering like this is an important thing to have. Yeah, but if this is the future where it's something things about accessibility or stuff goes out of that engineering thing, then maybe it's.
Well, I mean, that engineering thing is about the platform that they claim is.
Okay, so it's.
So but to Liz's point, it would be a request for a New Kirk Station, a New Kirk Plaza Station upgrade.
Yeah, like like, because I know they're eventually going to make everything accessible, but like, should we be trying to prioritize this to hit the most people and give that a global one express that seems?
We'll add an express and we boss, right? And also they're tying it into their I B X presentation. So, yeah, I think I think I think. The timing is good for that. Also. No, it'd be super passionate. F D C actually had a has a is going to be already make um. W B R to New Kirk Plaza. They wanted to do it on the station house. It's going to be on the other house. Um, that's over toward the New Kirk's Avenue side and the the station. It was like, but one of their reasons. Be. Because the stations have to be. Speech. It's like, are you actually saying it's too free? Like, like.
Oh, really?
Like covering your. Anyway.
I have a quick question. I don't quite understand. We're moving from Church Avenue and we're doing uh, New Kirk Plaza, but not. To other stations. Like, what happens if we could tell you?
We could ask for all of them. We can say upgrade all of the stations from Church Avenue through, I think, what's the last one? They they give us one in twenty twelve or something like that. Yeah, so you could say New Kirk to Church. The Brighton stations for New Kirk to Church. We could ask for all of them. I love asking them to make the platform wider and.
Just like I'm not.
Oh, super question. I think parks is on the, I think it's just. Think it's just on the.
Okay, P side.
Yeah, right.
Two.
I guess someone else forgot. Should be putting on some sort of priority order. Like obviously they're all important, but just if we can reach the most people that like it's like, I think.
I think they'll do that. Okay, they're not just say, oh, we would have done better lately, but. It's not, not wanting to see the word. Um.
Yes.
Parks, man. Well, Lake Shore Project. Hotspot Tatla.
Only thing that confused me about parks, only thing that confused me about Lake Shore. Saying project is not yet postponed. Just because I was under the impression for at least half a year in the city vacation set that.
No, it's not fully funded. It's just whatever, whatever component they're. Yeah, like phase one. So my response to them saying it's not yet fully funded is when I write, which is why we're asking.
Okay, no, that's fine. This is part of my part because I like it there you was funded, but okay, that was.
Yeah, you see that last sentence? It's like this is at least a twenty million dollar project and FY twenty five, five million is out.
That's fine.
Um, Hotspot Tatla, it's the only playground if we just report team that has had no capital love since I took this job back and whatever you're like. Um, and parks will always say. We don't have the capital budget. So this year I was, I spoke to Commissioner Martin Bailey, we had a budget consultation with him. I'm like, we've got to stop. This, we need a paradigm shift. And one percent of the interest for parks, talks about one percent for parks. I love that. We've got behind that is a board, but anything you can make, you know, this is. A long haul kind of thing, but if we've not started, it will never begin. Um, we need a paradigm shift in this city. Um, Carl can attest that it comes up more and more at at Borough Board, that the idea that. Prospect Park gets a four million dollar value rehab which we want, we support it, we're glad about it, but you know, the the. Chairs of, you know, the Chair of C B Four and Bushwick and me, myself and I here in fourteen, like. We have five overlapping council members. So to the extent that a council member might have a little bit of land here, but most of their voters are on the other side of a border, they're they don't have incentive. The other thing is. And they do put capital money into a park. Will it be done by the time that they've completed their term? Probably not. They will be out of office for a living money. So their incentive also is decreased by that. So. If parks had its own capital funding, the parks that have the lowest reported card scores and are in the worst shape would get. The projects first. It would be done objectively instead of by the day raises and whoever's been elected to that.
And this is why, like, when you talked about also like the one percent for parks and the paradigm shift, this is the thing. I don't know how to support it, but because parks insidiously, this is almost, I'm just wondering. But this be the kind of like all the meeting right now. So I'm just wondering, could this be the kind of thing where? If this is the universe, well, let's say forty out of the fifty nine boards had this similar expense, like capital expense request regarding a park in its own. Capital budget. But naturally, you're in oversight committee hearing from city council to bring in parks and find out why they don't have one and then.
No, they should fund it. They they don't need an oversight. You may need to just fund it and then put it in the budget. I don't know that city council members necessarily have the incentive to do it because what they could do is just give back all of the funding that they're allowed to give to parks and let parks spend it according to need. But then that means they might be giving that money that could have been spent in their districts and so they don't have the incentive to do that. I think it's really the mayor's budget that has to push for it and then eventually city council would have to acquiesce or. It would be a budget in addition to then their budget could be, I mean, I think it's in a very legal gray area because. The city council money is never supposed to supplement the missions of city agencies. I mean, it's the opposite. It is only supposed to supplement and not supply.
Yeah.
And um, and you know, I don't know why. Anyway, so I'll put the paradigm shift language in here, but I want to keep.
I don't think we know that this is part of the district that has like the farthest to walk to parks.
I put that in there. That is my mantra. Yeah, I mean.
But Sean, yes, I'm glad you're keeping it in because I saw some parents were talking about that. This this very.
Hi, good.
Hello. Yeah.
Hang on, make it time.
I was saying, yeah. I was saying there were parents that were talking about that very.
All right, went over on Kent's Road. I mean, we'll also advocate. You know, through council, e- even though I was saying I wish that this is how it was funded. I don't want to cut off our noses to spite our faces and so we can also ask for council funding for that. I think and I and I have the uh. Projection for the cost of that. It's not, it's like two million dollars. It's tiny. Um. The. Which is a welcome center at Prospect Park. I I. Which is a lot of center at Prospect Park, I, I. So we could do continuing support on this. I'm age eight nine, if you wanna touch up to where we're at. Um, class of a shaffer and Mary on the ground continuing. So that is fully funded, capital.
Sorry, I just, just go back and try to do someone. Yeah, I, I know there are a lot of, if you noted this, then D P R and D C L A. Would there be any way going forward to, I guess, requests from D C L A as well?
Yeah, but I don't think it's a budget request. I think it's a policy request and I think it would have to do with the programming, not the capital. But I, I hear you and I think that we can support that, you know, collaboration. And I think, you know, they also have to get to the point where I believe they'll have a, um, a community-based organization that might be involved with the mental understanding, ability programming, but they're just not there yet. They haven't revealed.
Okay. I have one more question about the order. Then some of these things are continuing, thankfully. Would we be able to move up the number five from the order for, um, parts of recreation of the highest, especially because of what families are saying and what lives by the name of. And it's written here that we have the few, fewest parks, especially walking distance, confident that that is like, is like when we hire.
How do you feel about putting that as number one? Cause it's almost, you know, even though I'm saying we should put it in here because it's more about. But that kind of is like the intro to, we need a paradigm shift for how you're funding these things.
There's a lot of attention on like side review as well, so I don't think it's gonna detract from that.
Number, um.
How do you make that be a mod? Find us a space, we'll do it, but we don't have.
You know, I, whenever I come through, um, these, um. Yeah, and there's that, there are like buildings sitting there. And I think, I, yeah, that's, there was actually, there is an R and T out of that way.
Is there not?
And the fact that it could be public space, it could be housing, it could be disruptive. Right, so I have, I, 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 there was an R and T out on that years ago when I can't remember how many, I think. That was MTA let the R and T, for, for, no, no takers, there were no bids on the R and T. Somebody came by and said, can we turn this into a community art space? And, but didn't have, you know, come here to do that. Then there was a developer that came by and, um, and didn't bid on it for whatever, you know, developer math that went into that. And so it came off the R and T list and then MTA pulled back any intention to let the R and T on it because of potential system upgrades, because I've hit MTA, there was a, a middle house or something like that. So I don't know, but it might, it might, there's gonna be system upgrades that are related to I B X installation and that becomes a functional property again. That might be why they're holding on to it, but I can check if they're not.
You guys have already voted on the I B X situation?
No, they, we're nowhere near a vote on it. But I, um, we're at, we're from Public Library Radio. I will get, I will ask the libraries if there are specifics. And this road, Portell, you wrote with someone that came up through our, um, being like through the process where we ask people in the community for, 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 for this kind of community. But it kind of goes back to that D Y C conversation, like, well, roll for a conversation.
I had one question. Um, we're gonna extend that this, right? Okay, um, there's a two agency that don't have capital advice. I was wondering for D Y C B, if we have any, um, what do you call it? They're not a capital agency. Oh, okay, is that expense?
D Y C does, D Y C B does nothing but contact them.
So then, is it in any trades?
We're putting in expense part?
Yeah, yeah, thank you.
You wanna go? Oh, I had a question about, I don't know if this is expense or capital. I'm happy to have it, like, move on to later, but, um, just, I remember later in this December, somewhere here, we talked about like, and places there. And it seems that, that new heart and spin, something helping a lot of it, but a lot of buildings in our zone don't qualify for something for that, cause they're too big and there's not a different proposal for it. And I didn't know if there's a, if that would be expensive or profitable to, like, ask them to expand a program for, you know, medium-sized apartment buildings to get into some sort of rapid.
That's expensive.
Sorry, I shouldn't know.
We are at age 27 now, so, um, let me do it this way. The, the things that I'm here for Department of the aging sort of set well with the, did the same request that they're having and invoking their public hearing now to be. If there's any changes people want on that speed now or we move on to B O H H. The order of B O H and H could be in which way, um, I'll update the statistics that go on, but does anybody have any concerns or desire to move any of these into a different order?
Personally, the final with the order is just, um, the thing I had in my head, I didn't know how I could fit this into the expense request, but it was just something about coordination with E S and Y. Just because I don't see how it can have, like, best control situation, which is, uh, which is a symptom of trash and other stuff. And I have E S and Y been there somehow. And so I'm just spitballing, cause I was reading that and I was thinking, is there some language that I didn't come up with? Why that coordination has needed? And I couldn't think of something.
There isn't coordination. I mean, I, I wouldn't say that there isn't coordination problem, but when D O H M H goes out to, to, if there's a, they said it's back there. And they recognize sanitation, a lack of sanitation compliance. That goes to sanitation and then we get a sanitation, we buy water, we send out a super. So I think it does. The coordination is there. In terms of the budget request, I mean, they, P O H M H does, like, they actually do a good job with being responsive and moving the baby.
And if you take a picture, you can send it to three, one, one, and they usually send some. If you take a picture of the trash not in a can.
Yeah, I mean, sanitation actually is really responsive to us too. So like, separate from the provenance, sanitation responsive to sanitation and plants. The P O H M H does coordinate the sanitation on, if they're going out and bathing, I mean, their baby is gonna be the sanitation first.
Okay, thank you.
I'm just gonna say, you know, for all the, the muhaha that they made about that may have to get your sense that you can't put your stuff out before a certain time and we've gotta have these bids and everything else. Stuff is sitting out there for two days with, and consistently, consistently. We put it out Tuesday night, for Wednesday morning, take up, and it gets picked up on Thursday.
If it gets picked up.
It pains me when my own board members come to me with a general complaint act that they haven't brought to my attention in real time.
Yes, we are.
Oh, yeah.
On Monday night, we put down Monday right before the holiday, Tuesday, no paper. Wednesday morning, so little bit, I had my, my cycle, but Thursday around 10:00. And I didn't get, where I go trash paper for Wednesday afternoon.
Okay, I will say, I will say this week it was also, it was also a Monday holiday and that was happened. But especially on those weeks that wasn't a Monday holiday, please let me know in real time, cause we'll get them out there and, and we get those calls again. Maybe every single day, maybe every single day, somebody called and says, a value person picked up. And then I called Joe. I called Rob.
Right. Yeah, and like service or support them.
I mean.
Like.
There's different, general reasons and different tags and sometimes like on some of the streets, like along Conwy, we get a lot of residential misses because they think it's commercial. Um, dead ends. Also, you know, sometimes it's a late put out and, um, so. So I'm also trying to. Forty, do it. And then, and then also let me know if it's not picked up within the next 10 hours after you call this office.
I know you, you know, I wanna know, I want the root problem.
Yeah, that's what I'm.
Why are we waiting till Wednesday? Have a problem with rats and.
I would have to see how often it really happens in different places, because it's. If there's a single block, sometimes, it just depends so much. But sometimes like, oh, that was a route where we had some out of towners. Out of towners is the, is their sign for like, the guys who don't really muster out of this garage. We had to borrow guys from C D eighteen and then they don't live in Walder and stuff like that. But if you're telling me that there's blocks where it happens time after time after time after time, then, then it's probably the sand walkers that may have to, somebody needs.
So you mentioned a dead end. I live on a dead end, so that could be it. And not everybody uses, for my intuitive of the organic, you know, the brown bin. Not everybody on the block has users of the bin. So I don't know what the issue with, with sanitation is, but all of it is because we pass it. And it was all there for days and they didn't tell. Finally, I just took the whole bin back to the backyard because people were talking to still stay.
Let me know in real time and if we discern any patterns and we can give them what the pattern is. I don't know if it's a budget request, we have to have a lot of data to take with that.
So just, so just for that too, for me personally, for the D O H M H board, I'm.
Okay. Uh, what are we doing with T H S, honestly, I guess, I don't.
I had, I had no answer for you two, buddy.
But I think if that would be an additional group for making the order, it's probably not.
There's problems, there's numbers. It's not, it's not an issue of people. It's an issue of the homelessness, personally, themselves.
The issue is how unsafe it is inside of the shelters. And there's a, there's a fear of being sodomized. Yeah.
In the box, they're, they're used to that, they're comfortable with that, because they've become accustomed to it. And I think that that's, that's where I was getting, problems, didn't set me two hours, they're back out, why?
It's, it's threatening. It's like being in a jail, it's unsafe. And the security that's provided for those men is inadequate. So if you're in a shower, I've never been, but this is based on what I've heard. If you're in a shower and, you know, the security's over there, it's like a jail. And that you're out of luck.
Reality is the way I was suggested. Actually, safety concerns. How they run those shelters. Is part of the reason why they need to have 215 counters just to get somebody in there, is to beat them seven hours and then back out on the street. You've got to improve the shelters so that they feel more accepting and wanting to be there. Then you'll be able to get them off the street in a much faster time and less encounters.
Transition.
We actually have that language in there before, that the fact that it takes, it's some kind of, some incentive. The fact that it takes this many encounters for somebody to accept services speaks to the quality of the.
Well, I would say it's also not, it's like, it's not getting so many shoes, accept services, but it's also getting them documented as being homeless and in the system. They don't even have to go to shelters necessarily, but having it documented, being chronically street homeless. And then henceforth getting the system, getting a, like, case worker or somebody who's gonna work with them to get them, whatever it is. So it, it's a lot more than all this.
Yeah, on the budget, on the budget level, though, I just. I don't know how to ship that policy. It's a paradigm again.
Would you rather sleep on the queue train or in a shelter? On the queue, you make us feel unsafe. Shelter, you feel unsafe.
I think that one of the, you know, this really speaks to a lot of the issues is that we, you know, we need to have some things that go through the whole shelter system. We need like real transitional housing and longer term safety for that. I don't know. You know, that's, that's such a complicated request, because I know we address homelessness and H P D and other areas of this, but I don't know if there's any way we can kind of nod to needing transitional supportive housing here as well. Like, again, you know, that's not, like, that's obviously.
It's, it's, it's a negative time. H R A, you know, the, the best way to address homelessness is to prevent it. Right, so a lot of that goes into the H R A and home base programs and stuff like that.
A lot, and a lot of the housing probably, the vast majority of it also is mental health.
Yeah.
Stuff, because if they can't take care of themselves, that's not, it's not gonna help them.
Are there doctors?
But also, you know, the need more people to take care of themselves, whereas they have the same.
You, you have a question about.
Yeah, I think, I, I am gonna stretch the third, um, request, because it's not, as well as it's out of that. So. Yeah, both three close away.
Yep.
And then H R A.
H R A, um, I'm aligned with this, I think it's a project you're saying, so I'm representative of that here. Can we, can I get some clarity going around, like, what are the actual assistance program that would support? I think the data in here is really, like, of like, the renter, like, all that information is, is, I don't know, anyone can argue that. I'm just curious if we get more there, like, what?
What emergency rental assistant, one chat deals, P E P S, city P E P S, home base programs are? Those are the names to programs. It'd be hard for me to remember exactly which ones. And one chat deals, like, if you're, it's the fourth case and it, and it, and it provides funding for your arrears as long as you can pay going forward.
But are there any of these that we need more, cause that's why we listed, like.
No, I, I know, I mean, we can't tell them what we need more, because those are actually like case driven, like, it's, it's meeting the criteria. And then they don't just say like, well, we ran out of home base funding, so we're gonna put you in P E P S now. Um, all of that is forward ordered and it, and it's based on meeting certain criteria to qualify for each.
I thought it would be like, this is like, hey, this is where we have that, we need, then we need that more.
Mine, the towers, because we have H R A here, really interesting, so, you know, we have special, we really are dedicated and want to help people for sure. And so I don't like saying like, well, you know, you're just not doing enough of this, because I just feel like you're dedicated. But, um, sometimes they talk to us about like, you know, the funding, because things are mandated, it isn't a matter of like having more money to do more things. They get funded on the, on their per capita service. So sometimes having a budget consultation, like, they're gonna get the funding they need based on the cases they have.
From last year.
So it's, they work inside out, start right inside in.
If there, there are opportunities, they're like, or is it kind of implicit in here to ask for more staffing to help support these programs or that?
They didn't say they have an issue with H R A. It's, sometimes, you know, sometimes city agencies are not, they don't wanna speak out of school either.
Yeah, I mean, there is a, you have the thing here, it's.
I know, that's why I have to sometimes say, like, you're sensitive, like, you need to be more, like. Stop telling us what you have, we're telling you what you need.
Based on my form of professional experience, I could take.
Yeah.
Like, cause most of these programs aren't, they're federally funded or state funded and there's a lot of, most of the delays are from a lack of ability to quicken the process.
Increase headcount to. And increase headcount to.
Yeah.
Okay. We'll add. I love our consultation with A C S, they do so many. Programs, they're being positive and responsible. But again, I don't know, you know, specifically, we don't have a sense of how many of our adoption services we can. How many of our adoption services we can. You know, I believe their case management numbers are a little bit longer than a long time ago. So if there's anything about this request, it's very general. I can add to it. I can specify in it or I can leave it as is just as a placehold to acknowledge A C S.
Uh, this is maybe not appropriate, but it's like to me that the. Organization that received the award to manage the N P C should be reminded that they are maybe circle. And including the Flatbush. Because they're mounted kind of on a corner. District and I think.
I mean, they've done their programs and. So I have seen their activities and they work with uh. They're separate together. So there and now we have some activity here, but um. Outreach check this. D Y C D, you're talking about what? What? So what?
Agree with the youth employment. That's why you think stuff, but I think there's an additional need for. Full year activities. I don't, I know that they give, I know it's external tonight. They give out. Within schools, but I'm starting. I've seen this and I know there's been an uptick in the number of the law. Um, the increase in our youths being outside with their best lives in the streets instead of in programs. Um, and we all know what comes with that. Um, so I think there is a need for like. Some expense funding around increase of life programs across the schools and like maybe. Alternate, like different options. That's why I think the, at least what I've seen in my experience is the same offerings. So I don't know if that's attractive enough.
So but this is the tricky part with D Y C D. We can't say increase the program and we can only say fund an R F P. Because they don't do any direct service. They they let contracts to communities go to the station. So if you know a C B O that would run a program, we can probably find a D Y C D funding stream that would match that.
But so the R F P can be tailored to specific program.
I think it, they are. I think the R F Ps are in tail which like like S Y E P is one program. Ladders for Leaders is another program. Compass is another program. I mean, the the cute names of programs at D Y C D are in abundance. But it's just matching the C B O. That will apply for the funding to do the program.
Are they seeing a lack of C B O applying for the funding?
I don't know. I don't. So here's one thing I said a number of years ago is like, why does. Community District Six get all of this money? And they're, you know, their median income is way higher than Community District Fourteen. And here was the answer they gave me that. They said a lot of these community based programs are. Houses, their headquarters are in Park Slope, but it doesn't mean this is where they're serving. So. That that was their reasoning for that. But we can get the list of all of D Y C D funded programs, which I probably have it in a email tomorrow. Um, and we can run it through at a at a committee meeting. And then if we can identify community based organizations in this area, we see a gap. We can reach out to at the nonprofit roundtable or through our through our database on that and say. Why, maybe even a survey, like why, how did you apply to these D Y C D dollars? Especially now that D Y C D claims that it's paying its fee contracts in more timely fashion.
Does you, does uh. D Y C D. Happened during the year, school year, or is it only during summer?
They have a lot of programs and so some of those, S Y C, S Y E P, I think, is only over the summer. But I think they just made an announcement of some other employment program that continues in the school year. But a lot, but they have a lot of other, like Ladders for Leaders, I think, is a school year.
But it's like all all of those organizations and mentorship and school programs. We have a lot in our our district, but like.
I was, I didn't know what the gap is. I think it's good to do some research to figure out like how many we have. What the current gap is to figure it out because I'm just going based on like what I'm experiencing and I've noticed. Yeah, and.
Is that because there isn't a program available or is it because the students slash families aren't available, availing themselves of a program that might be available? Or is it outreach and they don't know it's probably. So yeah, let's figure out what's what's at the bridge we have to do.
Your folks, well, parents get more because they. They know more and they're asking more, whereas, you know, in a in a community like ours, especially with very high immigrant. People may not even know what they stop and maybe ask for more.
Yeah, I was going to say that a lot of parents, kind of the way they're wrong, and that there are. Kids too with learning disabilities and many of them are out there getting into trouble. At fourteen, at fifteen, just joining together, some have left home. And this is as serious, it's really an issue.
That's also, you know, that crosses over to the A C S programs too, that that we can, you know. Be more specific about when I.
So that'll be like a second, that's a second.
Yeah, I mean, I kind of just have that as a general. Yeah. You know, I'll add. I don't think this is the right way to say it anymore, but we used to say.
Um, one addition, I like the first one, one addition. This last year, a lot of the youth that were part of S Y E P were scam. For the hard earned money that they got. So I wonder if there's any expense funding around um including programming for.
Can you explain that? Because I think I saw that on Instagram.
No, it wasn't really true. It's like people, people are targeting them specifically because, you know, they get those cards over the summer that's like. Kind of whatever account. A lot of students like lost all that money because like on, because I have them, but they target burnable.
So they like swipe it and then they take all the money from the card?
That or they were calling them or they're like different, same thing they do for like our elderly population or like.
Find it out the language, enhance S Y E P programs to include financial awareness training.
Yeah. Well, the question I have about the gas, the media, people aren't, don't know about these programs is just do we have to outreach enough languages? I know that, you know, a lot of outcomes for kids, it kind of depends on how much their parents know what they're, we've given a high immigrant population with a lot of. Primary English speakers.
Yeah, no, they ask us for, you know, our our um. Our most representative languages and then they also, to their credit, asked us for uh languages of limited.
And the word fraud is in in the end, it's the financial awareness. Because they do finance financial awareness, like they do.
Oh, it's like this thing. The five year application, put that behind your application. I'm already. Okay. N Y P D. They've only one expense budget on here and it's higher additional crossing nerves and I want everybody, even though I said we're not gonna dwell. On agency responses. Agency does not support.
I was gonna, I can't help myself. And so one of the things they kept saying is like, N Y P D needs body, we need people. So I read this and I'm like, okay.
We're gonna feed the request there. Say again, we have the word defer to just be like, no, we 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 ask.
I see what you're saying.
I mean. I I I just wanted to defer to them. Just don't have a super to them. We also potentially add that like large intersections, that it'd be good to have two crossing guards as part of this because they're like, we don't know where to put it. There are definitely some very difficult to cross intersections where you can tell.
Two if we don't have more.
But just super like, you don't hate the people. That's that is one of the places you need.
They're hiring. E L S is hiring. Turns over speed, excuse me.
So we'll keep that there. We're out of where they're hiring.
That's true.
Here's here's a wacky one. I mean, this was something that it was an idea that had some light last year and I think it sort of has um. Maybe stated out. I still love it. I think it's a really creative or interesting proposal. I just don't know if it has any air left in it. Happy to keep it here for. Actually, you know, maybe someday it will happen, but I I don't.
Because it can be a sort of like training into.
They said first day, they have first day as well. So like, why, why isn't that?
But they do a good job.
You know how to use the tree that falls down the one step that wasn't too large.
And that because the beaches are perks.
And they do a good job, I think. I've met, I've taken the test.
They are good, yes. But I agree that the training, the training should come from.
F D and Y.
It used to be that that uh F D and Y used to moonlight, like fire to fire return line is. Maybe another thing we should dig into is. There was something about like they were going for their allotted time and then they were driving overtime and stuff. Okay. D D P.
Is this a place where if, um, I know we're one of the other, another community event that's happening tonight in a flooding prevention. Coordinated. I just want to mention it because there, we can count very large prevention kits. Two people had it and I didn't know if that's a. Another possible like. Ask we could have in. You want it number one or number two? I'm gonna word it better than this, but for my notes, I wrote flooding workshop and prevention.
Sanitation thing was, didn't you have one year that we were gonna talk about?
Apartment buildings in our, like larger than, um, you know, nine year, they don't have access to. Um, hardened bins or a program for that. And that, you know, I think we have seen some success in mitigating rats through. The other one, but there are still buildings that are not able to, they're still putting out bags and it's.
One hundred percent.
Bad for us.
Expand our bidding program to the size.
Besides enlarge.
Yeah, yeah.
But large, I think already has, yeah?
Now mountains of.
Yeah, that's what I'm saying. So that program is.
If they're, if they're. Flouting the rule, maybe definitely enforcement angle we can add first and anything to that. Yeah. Increase the enforcement personnel.
Yes, in that case, given you, given that addition. You know, it feels strongly, I feel kind of like especially the sanitation and stuff given that. Personally, I'm a fan of. That container idea. Being number two. Keeping number one is that others winning requests. Moving the targeted enforcement to number three. And then the number, like that's, that's how I'm really looking at that.
That's fine. Providing expand organics program, is this, is this still necessary or are we, are we full fledged with this?
I mean, I have.
They said that they. Um, the other, the other thing I was gonna say is there's also some amount of, I've heard from people. Um, that their landlords aren't actually providing these bins and so they're just taking the like feed and. Or if they're just getting, you know, fined for it instead, um, and. Folks in those buildings don't have a way of discussing it. I have told them to contact your office. Um, I don't know if they've all heard on that, but. I don't know if there's something we can say about making sure that there's compliance for somebody. I don't know if that's. I think that's service delivery.
I, you know, I, okay, I'm torn on vendor enforcement because frankly, it's completely failed. It's a failed failed policy. So funding, you're funding the expansion of a failure field's wrong.
Wait, you don't like the vendors? No, it's about the enforcement, the regulation of the vendor. I like the vendor. I think, uh, I think vendors licenses.
Okay, well, we can ask that the unlicensed vendors who are in streets that there's no vending allowed. Yeah, so to to so. I I hear you that you might think that the regulations are over water. You might wanna.
I I think regulation is good.
Okay, but there's no reinforcing like regulation right now.
Oh, so we shouldn't have someone enforce those regulations?
That's what I, is there still a backlog and new applications? Like, I have, I have under the impression there's like a limit to how many licenses I have to get out for this and that.
Yeah, but that's not a sanitation issue. Right now, whatever, anybody who is. Illegally vending because they're not licensed to them or they're licensed, but they're vending on a street that is a. Vendor street. Will be able to continue to conduct their business without a license or in an area where it's not allowed. Because the sanitation enforcement.
Yeah, but in my P D N S question, that's all.
They moved it out of N Y P D and into D S and Y.
Yeah, I don't think I've ever seen this.
Wait, sanitation place looks almost exactly like N Y P D.
I promise you with N Y P D, they dance with N Y P D.
So then they must have been vending something that was N Y P D enforceable if they had some on us on their cart that they weren't supposed to be selling on.
Is there a different agency rate for the process that they make sure that that licensed program expands? So that everyone can be like. Or that faulty. Sorry, I don't know.
Look, that will take some more community. That's what we want because there's a, but there was strong margins association pushback on some of the vending that's happening. You know, people are paying their brick and mortar. Sidewalk and then on that sidewalk is somebody who's competing with them.
How do the people on Cortelli Road feel about the produce vendor across from the Flatbush Co-op?
There is and I can't speak for everybody.
Has there been a complaint about that? Is that legal? Is it, is he a licensed vendor? I don't know. I'm asking. I don't have an opinion. And how, how would he be regulated? How would it be enforced?
So when it was N Y P D, he would get a ticket or is is, well, same way. Um, you can get in violation and your product can be refused and then and then it gets that. Factored and then you have to go and pick it up if it's salvageable. Um, I think that D S and Y says that they are doing vendor enforcement and they have numbers where they are doing vendor enforcement, but they're citywide. And so if they come into this district, they're hawked you and they'll be like, well, no, I told you, you can't sell that, you know. And then you'd be like, yeah, 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 and I'm clearing it out. It won't be back and then they leave. They're not coming back for three months and.
I love it.
No, I wanted to ask. When we talked about large buildings not. Complying with the organic, why is the. No, I wanted to ask, when we talked about large buildings not complying with the organic, why is the large build? How, how large building?
Thirty two.
Doesn't that mean it? Does anybody?
Uh, all these builders have about thirty two or more.
Yeah, it tends to be over thirty, uh, depending on the regulation. Depending on the money price per foot, on the, on the, depending on the regulations for both of them.
Um, okay. Are you thinking of removing preventing one though?
The question is, do we still have a need? Is it, like, are we, is this still a request we wanted, like, even if they saw that?
Right.
Um. I don't have a budget.
I'm sorry, so, yes.
Okay, it's moving as well, I mean, it's, I can't pretend like it's, like, it's a better situation than it is, since we say we don't need vendor enforcement.
Like move it down.
Yeah.
Exactly, yeah, move it down, yeah.
Last.
But that is also neighborhood by neighborhood. I live in Flatbush and there's a lot of vendors that are around church and that.
Yes.
About something about. They're selling produce. And there's one little, uh, a late entrance into the, uh, you know, vegetable, they have a legitimate store. And I'm seeing so many people purchasing from the vendors, and I know the people are.
Yes.
Right? So I feel, I understand that a lot of the vendors, maybe migrants, teenagers living, but at the same time, I feel, you know, some concern for these people who have been trying to, you know, make a success of.
And I get that, and I'm, I'm gonna say something that it, it might sound a little bit counterintuitive, but back when NYPD was the enforcement agency, there was rapport between many of the police officers and many of the vendors. To the extent that one time I asked this one officer, in particular, we were getting complaints about a vendor privately. And he was, and he, obviously, he. Maybe often, it leaves to the weekend, this is most, you know, practice spot, his kid is in the hospital. Come Monday, I'll ask him to move along. They also, the vendors, because their cash business kind of depended on some of the protection that they got from PD and maybe a little, unfortunately, because the vendors were out there every day, sometimes they had observations to share. So there was, it sounds, I mean, it was certainly, there are also big problems that I think have been, we all have seen in the past, whatever. But like the day to day here in Mayberry was, um, you know, there were, there were more benefits to having it, but the people who had been on the ground every day and knew who they were talking to and knew who was, like, just trying to make ends meet. They sometimes would be just like, can we just move around the corner, can we get you over here? So there was that sort of rapport and understanding that just doesn't exist with FDNY coming from like a bunch of robots.
And also, I just wanna put out there, we are part of adjacent, so little Korean, and it is very cultural. The vendors, so, so I do wanna put that out there, like, I, I hear both sides, I understand, but for the people in the community, for a demographic in the community, that is their culture. So I think there is a part of. Definitely, I think there's a balance of.
Right, it's not necessarily just can go unfettered and everyone is able to do whatever, but I think allowing more people into the program and having more regulations would be the way to.
We're only halfway through and it's not.
Yeah, so I don't know what else, what else to do.
H W P, we need the last vendor, vendor, uh, H C W P vendor license. Where we? Uh, now we're on page eight. Page one, very soft there. We didn't talk about, uh, commercial containers, but vendors, vendors.
Yeah.
All commercials, what can I say?
Now we're on page nine, sorry. DOB. D P P can be active, it's meant to that time, whether you like.
Oh, yeah, my thing.
I just think, maybe name it for them, like, the impact. So then can we name a business when, when you've not met, year over year, decade over decade?
I like that. Uh, you know what else? About how you manage to hold agencies.
Yeah.
To provide new appliances to. Can I add? Um. Can we imagine the disparate needs statement?
Yes.
Platform. Can't even tell you the tech problems ahead, which is. Um, okay. D B. Take a look, tell me, maybe you change position, order.
I, I haven't seen very many illegal conversions yet.
Well, we get the call started more from, I mean, South Midwood was for a long time, but yeah, I mean, that's really died down a lot. But it's also, this is like zoning stuff, illegal term cuts. There was a tight specific current city and just required neutrality, that if we just re, if we, if they just enforced a free or legal backyard parking pad, there'd be like some sort of like huge, do you know what the status of this was?
No, but I remember that there'd be like, there'd be so much more rainwater, like get absorbed in the grass that have been permeable or in permeable surfaces.
Would you go take a switch in?
Yeah.
On the order? Yeah, and I think maybe take a, get a legal conversions or at least putting that like later in the paragraph so more, um.
I think so. Again, as I'm reading it, like. Anything to do with the buildings.
You have a legal conversion, use the buildings.
D B does, D B expects some legal conversion.
No, no, I, I get that, but not, not being addressed illegal conversion. Enforcement of illegal term cuts.
It's like, they're all zoning violation request, though. I think it's how they fit together.
That, that's just like the dropdown address illegal conversion, they just show them, I don't like writing about it.
No, I think part of it is me not writing better cap.
You wrote all of this?
Yeah.
I have.
Yeah.
I think there's definitely.
Right?
Illegal conversion in my building, it's an area that's all unstableized, it's a part of the department. A lot more than that, right? Looks like, oh, great, things are great. Get across the unit, you just got a lot more. You know, it's lost.
I think, so I'm gonna, I'll work on this for, how it can help on our website somehow tomorrow. Um, and for your review, the final recommendation on Monday, and maybe just make it even more, even more general, like, um, especially with zoning changes, um, more deal, we can actually oversight, um, zoning compliance. Um, and then make it number two, not number one.
Would it be helpful to like, remove, like, to separate like the housing concern that, um, Michelle, that I just mentioned about of conversions of apartments, because that is what I think, and what I see in dress illegal conversions, um, from, you know, the kind of from the, the more building code ones, like, just, just so that's clear to them.
Zoning compliance, building code. Gotcha. That makes sense.
Yeah, I think, I mean, okay, like, address illegal conversion, I'm using building, right there.
Yes.
What's the future for that?
Okay, yeah, I think it's just two in one.
Are we moving on to HPD?
Not yet, um. The, oh, building must have this. We're already done, right? Okay. Now we're at HPD.
Good question, since provide more housing for extremely low and low income households. Does HPD have a program to just move people out of the city? Because it's not like housing, it's not like prices will come down and you can get educated enough to actually afford to live in the city. So it seems like you may have to.
I think there was a voucher program during, when there was asylum seekers that was trying to incentivize people to, I think there was.
Aside from.
Yeah.
But there is not a voucher program that you can take it, 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 a, 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 a subsidy and bring it outside of the city.
But I don't, I don't think we want that, right? Like, that's, uh, that's, like, we want to be able to continue to house people in their own neighborhood, I think. Per my playback of that, yeah, and, and in ways they can afford, like, everyone deserves to live somewhere they want to live.
Or people out of the city.
Yeah.
Why they.
It's nothing like you're trying, you know.
No, I mean.
Unintended consequences.
No, the way I said it and my suggestion was exactly that. And it's a hard thing to say, but, uh, I mean, are you gonna just suffer?
I think one of the, one of the, the interagency coordination requests here, I think is important that, you know, if there's DOB violations in place, I'm sorry, if there's HPD violations in place in a building and you've got a building that has like two hundred violations, which is some of our buildings have.
Yeah.
That to get a DOB permit to do some sort of m- major capital improvement in order to increase rent in one of those other units, there should be more coordination that like, you've gotta fix everything before you can capitalize on these units that you are going to fix.
That's unfair, I think, to the landlords, and it puts the landlords in positions where it's kind of like, uh, like you said to a girlfriend, like, I'll leave you if you don't do this, an ultimatum. And they, I, what I realized is that, that the landlords don't respond to ultimatums. So we can kind of sort of meet them, like, if you can at least handle five of them, that will allow you to redo the electric in that apartment.
I disagree, because your role as a landlord, your responsibility in really those.
Sure.
You are doing the service of people who are paying rent in that space.
Sure.
So that was like, the, the tenants are taking the burden from the landlord, I think that.
Yes, and it's true, it is, that is true, but, uh, I mean, the, you, I mean, the, the people in the building are like, we'd rather our building, we'd rather our basement be, uh, inhabitable and be able to do laundry in our basement, but he knows that the landlord doesn't wanna do it because there are twenty other violations and they won't allow him to do that until he meets the twenty other violations. So, you know, I don't know, there has to be.
Well, look, it's, it's it's not gonna happen because we put it in like the fifth paragraph on the ninth page of a, of our budget, but it, it should.
It should.
It does, it does suggest some coordination needs to happen, you know, when you need a building repaired, um, taking responsibility for your asset, you know, or expanding the asset.
It's like, if you're already a landlord that has a bunch of violations in your building and then you go apply for another HPD program, I don't think that should also happen, right? You're moving the event, so there, there should be like.
Yeah.
There should be some quarter, some.
It's like getting another credit card, you have that.
Yeah, exactly. There should be, there needs to be.
I understand because also that the city already does have some, or maybe by the state, has some amount of funding to help get, you know, prevents for landlords to help them.
Yeah.
Get things up to code and get things to be safe and happen.
That one program's like fifty thousand per, uh, rent controlled apartment that they were giving to landlords. They don't. To get the, to get the apartments back on the market, but they're not using them, so what does that mean?
Providing.
That's the just said.
It's not worth it, the word supportive, is that?
Yeah.
You know, we were talking earlier about.
I think supportive.
It's like the nineteen seventy.
Yeah, the one I do, it's by one, but, um, we don't want, we should be encouraging also, you know, in order to help with all the problem.
Even if there's no flavor text of, and that was the other thing.
Support of housing doesn't make the transition.
Yeah. Yeah.
Oh, okay.
It's definitely part of it, it's a chocolate, which other than.
No, um, exactly.
Supportive housing isn't necessarily, isn't, I mean, there's permanent, that's a, 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 a place is, is permanent housing for people, um, in support of. It can depend.
Yeah, they, they, the national housing, they're HPD, and then H R A.
H R.
Which transitional housing?
Additionally, transitional housing.
So there would be the. Creation.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Except to me. So, okay. Um, all right, so. Can I provide the right hand children with housing in that, so those violations since our, it's based on our series. That's number one.
Yeah.
Number two is, um, working out the language for. For more housing for extremely low and low income housing. And then I could either add, in this request, we're doing a separate request for, um, additional transitional houses.
We also have a more enforcement officer who was requested earlier, I think that's number one. Oh, perfect, right, sorry.
You think about this in the.
No, no, I know, but like.
Oh, the transition, yeah, yeah, yeah.
I think the idea, we should locate a bit for different things to give up.
Um. Well, yeah.
We're.
Yeah. Yeah. I don't know, what are we gonna do with SBS? That's good.
Need to chop SBS a half.
Loans, loans.
You know what I'm gonna have for SBS, uh, um, some sort of support for the businesses that are not in this, in bids, such as our Coney Island Avenue businesses. Um, maybe some support for the bidification of Agnew, J and M. Um, because those are businesses that don't, the merchants association or, or community based organization anymore that oversees them, NBC is gone.
We have H, we had, we had like a juice coffee shop, the other thing.
We connect also with SBS, or point SBS on this defending issue. Hold on, I'm sorry. I don't understand. Ball on the air, we have. We have SBS program where they go to the vendors and like, hey.
I think that's P C W T, yeah.
It's never.
Okay. You know what, I don't know if that's a budget request, I will call SBS and see if they have a program to do vendor outreach.
Like, what?
I think that's it, I feel.
Department of Worker and Consumer.
Just very quickly, the stats. I know that, like, there is a flash push out, we really did, sure, that we did, but between Cherry Avenue, we had Ethan and going up to Lena, there seems to be so much garbage from the apartment building. And the guys who are working with the bid seem to be cleaning it up. Our over the weekend, we said, so do this, maybe a couple of weeks.
So when I know about that, I can always tell Lauren Collins, she can look into it because she's the one who's overseeing it.
And also hopefully, the containerization request we have earlier will help clarify who just domain isn't like as well.
You know, EDC might also do the vendor outreach stuff, uh, um, I guess, okay. DOT, Lordy. I'm gonna talk about DOT only.
We have a two team out of a suggestion I had last year, and I wonder if we just need to be a little more explicit and just pass them to, there's doing weight, they're trying to do, they're doing weight based enforcement on the VQV, and they expand that to length based enforcement as well. So that fifty three foot trucks that are way too big for our intersection just don't come over there.
Yeah, that's true, that's an issue.
They're literally illegal, you're not allowed to have a.
I see big rigs coming down seventeenth sometime.
Yeah, yeah, I've seen them come down, um, like, what, east, uh,
H?
East, I've seen them come down and then turn onto H two.
Yeah, they're everywhere.
Holy.
Yeah, they've knocked down trees.
Get down, like, like east thirteen or fourteen of these.
So, yeah.
But I, I don't, I don't know if that's, if this is, I, I, I can tell you, you know how to write these better than me, but, uh.
I'm the same, it's a good conversation. Keeping the order as is or are we cooking?
Keeping the order as.
Order time, yeah.
Um. DOT is in the, is in the beginning stage of reimagining the truck routes in Brooklyn. So they don't want to come to us too quickly because they said they are renewing our truck routes. And I said, but everything you read was going to have impact on this. So they had not set me, we'll come soon, but that's another. Um, Department of Parks and Recreation, man, oh, man, I want it to be better, um, I mean.
What is the whole of what I'm doing, is it mad?
Yeah, so they have funded, they had a bad contract, and then contractor, they had to cancel the contract because the contractor, there was no fees. And then the problem is that the backup contractor also, and so there's a backlog, they had to cancel these two contracts, rela, the contract.
I'm the only question, without it.
No, I know, she's not.
My con, my comment on that today is like, when extraordinary things happen and you said, so we had to respond to the ordinary way.
Exactly.
It just doesn't compute, but, but there is a backlog, there's another contractor in place, they are doing more in-house.
Okay.
The, the commissioner feels confident that they'll catch up. The district manager has a little bit of attention, he did not share his confidence, and I don't know. He's such a charming guy, it's hard to maintain my theories, but, um.
Could we ask them to, uh, to label the trees again, like, about twenty years ago, they labeled all the trees.
So here's the thing, I've actually noticed they are right now in the midst of the twenty twenty five tree census, the census year for the trees. I can even give you the link if you have to go out and pump trees with your telephone, so.
Do I get any enforcement power?
A tree printer, like, can we, can we have probably a tree printing, um, community, I don't know, community. District based, yeah, but can, like, can it be like community district based or something, instead of just like, they have like one thing, one or two things a year, that usually came was. If you can't get, there's like so many people interested in it, I don't know if they.
Let's just, that we speak to the chairs of the Community Environment Committee and see if they can put that together for a community meeting.
Good idea. I don't want my own, that's all in charge of these things anymore.
Somebody may notice that.
I'm not the chair.
You really cannot play.
Your life is a board game. Like, previously. Never can. That was great.
There's these, citizen printers can be trained to be citizens.
Yeah, my.
Let's wait, actually be.
I just want to be on the screen, it's on my blog.
Yeah.
Because they're.
Maybe we actually expand.
Yeah.
If we could have one at a committee meeting, that'd be awesome. Yeah.
Okay, we're at Brooklyn Public Library and. Go ahead.
The Brooklyn Public Library is the main branch, first of all. Okay, and then Avenue J, turn on the A C, please, turn on the A C upstairs.
You have any good main ones?
No, not in any of, don't, if you go to the second floor of any library in all of Brooklyn, especially the main one, second floor, it's hot, it's hot. Yeah.
O and B, that's what I want to come up with. I want money.
Yeah.
Um, yeah. And then we, and then look, this is for you, this is. So, so we'll, um, so we'll add it to the. But, you know, I'm gonna, I'm gonna make this a stronger, because we just pointed out that in twenty years, we had one of the.
Yeah. Yeah.
Um. Sure, but that's, they're not the people anymore, they're not now.
Was another sheriff or something? I forget, we need to be important.
The kids are making.
Thing I want to do for this, I'm gonna, I'm gonna. T R D and. So there's the two other licenses that D C W P goes, they're like T R D, that's the e-cigarettes and cigarette licenses. And so some of the shops that are not smoke, they're not, they sell smoke shops, but they sell the baits and all of that. There is, there is a bunch of those that are also unlicensed, really abuse the license, so that. It's E R D and T R C V, if you have any, I used to have a, a much better first, T R D and E R C V. I have to check that. Um, the person who's really good at this was at Sun. Um, and so he was the person, he used to work for D W C, and he's the one that turned me on to the fact that. There's a limit of a number of licenses in each district, and ours topped out about three years ago. So anything, I think he were coming in at the time with some complaints, so anything.
I strategically and proudly, get this on record, prevented the licensing of a cannabis shop here, many years ago, about two years ago.
So. So, uh, now we're H, but, but yeah, so we'll keep that there, I will make sure that it matches up to the reality of today.
Did we want to add something about, is this the free owner licensing here?
I'm the person between, I'm leaving.
Okay, cool, put the note.
Somewhere else. For New York City, chance of the story, can we add a expense request around allocated more floods? Bubs, bubs from the headquarters, like, for high areas like Midwood.
Buses to.
Yeah, it's for sure, it's timing, though, like, at three P M, it is extremely unsafe, it's a hundred people at that bus stop at three P M. And, yeah, the only part of the. Yeah, and I, but I also went back to just watch that what was going on, and it happily did some locations along, that's going to be school, middle. And you said a hundred fifty percent, that's the, the, the college is right there, people working, it's a very high. But, remember that plan around, like, it doesn't need to be the full route, but like something to support that area.
That's six across, that's probably four more buses, which means three.
It was so interesting, I suppose, go back, I was to that random, um, the D six.
Forty nine.
Forty, yeah.
Just. I said fast and free bus.
But you know, it's obviously a transference, but I think I learned, M T A is in the. All right, everybody, I'm gonna give my best to get this off on what I'm saying, email.
B forty four, S B S, best, best bus in Brooklyn. S B S.
What is that?
I like Buster.
What's your name on that one?
Jerome.
All right. I am not gonna steal the trend from the industry. I have my little friends in my bag, and I don't, like, my little ass, if I didn't set my name.
Why nowhere, and nowhere. To that party, we're gonna hold a party. Yeah, I finished contacting you for that because I. And, and Nikki, um, um, take a look at Nikki's latest email, and let's, let's call us on that.
Malcolm Frinella. How you doing?
Good, good.
Classic Alice. How are you?
Nope, I think I probably swept it up. It's your. Yeah.
Everything's good.
Yeah, so, I'm a guy. I have got to show you this funny, funny picture. He's three miles. That was. His name is Sam, and that was, is that actually an afternoon, it's like his grandfather passed. That's his grandfather's initials, and the little man has brought my mom's. And like, he was three months.
Yeah. But it's. Hey buddy, what are you doing?
This bathroom, yeah.
I have a new knees.
Oh, of course.
Yes, because it's on, on next Saturday.
They grow so fast. Because like, he was first born, and then he was like, I'm like. But now he's crazy, but then he wasn't. Thank you. Yes, yes.
How are you? You had a night, what? Oh, yes, that's. Okay, I appreciate that, and I'm super bothered, and then I forget about it, and then I preach about it again, so I.
I mean, it's moving along slowly, but it's more than it was ever moving along short. I, yeah, and I'll, you know, I'll see if it grows up, but you can just.
First target, I hope the muscle is fast, I'm gonna work to not meet.
I don't wish I'd so much. All, you know. So are you gonna, are you, are you just gonna stay involved with the?
So this one, are you in motion?
Um, yeah.
Well, I'm not doing it now, and I basically, like, so hoping you'll bring that to me.
How you doing?
Did you go that joke? Go that joke? I. No, and I just don't know when. And I'm, tomorrow, and then we're going to. So I'm barely gonna get home, but I'm driving to, um, Valley Stream, I mean, you know, babbling the, uh, Belt Parkway. Oh, you know, and trying to get there, you know, and getting there in time for your mom. And then of all stupid, crazy things, my MetroCard, my, my senior OmniCard. Put that my pocket somewhere, a pair, uh, it's seat, didn't get used, I don't know, but where. Yes, it can be, the problem is that, for that, yeah, there's only certain places that will replace, you know, your places you can get OmniCards. But if it's a senior card, you have to get it. Why isn't it?
You'd click.
So, so what happens?
Click once and then, oh, then click it again right here.